To the discussion and direction of the Tourism Marketing and Promotions Management, and we've got Sam Taylor, our Deputy City Manager, presenting this.
Thank you, Council. I will do my best to be as quick as possible while also focusing on this very crucial issue. And I'm very thankful, I will say, I'm very thankful and appreciate the patience of folks who have stayed for this. It's quite late, which will make my presentation perhaps interesting as well. The purpose of this discussion is the City Council directed staff to evaluate, analyze, and report on alternative city tourism marketing promotions model. Along with, that was Goal 6G, that also included, it said both alternatives for the relationships with both the Chamber and tourism. And we completed the Chamber portion previously with the work on the visitor center with a new lease for their facility. We're very happy with that partnership and really glad we're continuing to build that as they continue to kind of rebuild that Chamber. Staff has now executed this goal to provide an alternative model recommendation and recommends the Council provide direction regarding how the city undertakes its tourism marketing promotions work in the future. And I want to be really clear, I think that's important. The goal we were given was to recommend an alternative and to investigate that, and that is what we've done tonight. And so we will basically be relying on Council to then make a decision just based on the information provided. In terms of tourism operations review, a little bit of history, in 2010, the City Council created the Tourism Business Improvement District with stakeholder support. It's designed to collect an assessment from visitors who stay at hotels in order to have a dedicated source of revenue to promote the destination of Mar-a-Lago Bay. That, I should also be clear, is controlled both by state law and city code. And state law and city code direct, kind of specifically how we utilize this funding. You can kind of consider a T-bid assessment like an enterprise fund where our water fund can only be used specific to that utility, very similar in this regard. We specifically use this funding for a specific reason, which is tourism promotions and marketing. The city initially had both a T-bid and community promotions committee. It was determined that these two bodies had significant overlap. And then after two years of the T-bid with volunteer advisory board members largely doing much of the work on the issue, the city agreed to discussions on a new management model. And that is when also they determined to get rid of the Community Promotions Committee. It's clear that at the time, the city did not have the current staff same focus on economic development and tourism promotions as part of the community's overall economic engine. And we've heard that pretty much every time I've spoken with anyone about the history of this, I've heard a lot of frustration about kind of almost a lack of interest or support from the city. And I think we're very interested in this process as we've been talking about it, about trying to be very, very overtly, almost aggressive about how excited we are to champion this and to be a part of it and to really focus on economic development. It's something that cities do and can assist with. And it's important that we continue to be a champion for this part of our economic engine. In 2012, the city determined to contract out its tourism promotions and marketing to an independent nonprofit 501(c)(6), the Mar-a-Lago Bay Tourism Bureau, which the city created. The Bureau began operation in 2013. The cities continued to review the most optimal format for management of this crucial economic development function. City Operations, Consultants Management Partners has recommended the city directly manage tourism operations for better efficiencies and a more coordinated approach to economic development. The way staff has also worked to translate that is this is crucial to our long-term strategic efforts regarding economic development. Again, the City Council adopted Goal 6G, which was to evaluate, analyze, and present to Council alternative models for partnerships between the Chamber and the Tourism Bureau. City staff have been doing background research on this issue since February 2015, when the goals, objectives were adopted. Obviously, this is even before I got here, so this has been worked on for quite a while. Staff has been discussing this issue with local hotelier community and with a wide range of tourism marketing experts since June 2015. That includes the folks in county, state level, even other local business community members. We've worked really hard to make sure that it's clear that we're listening, that while we had the specific task at hand, that we were trying to work to ensure we listened to concerns and included what we felt were balanced solutions to those concerns in this alternative model. And with that, we postponed a council discussion decision on this topic by the council from October 2015 until now in order to continue to accommodate the enhanced dialogue and also to ensure that the T-bid Advisory Board had an opportunity to directly address the staff proposal, which they did back in December. Since June 2015, staff has met with representatives of hotels that account for about 76% of the total rooms in the city. Staff has used that feedback from stakeholder community to fashion alternative proposal related to city directly managing its tourism promotions and marketing. The benefits of direct management, this is spelled out in the staff report, so what you'll see here is basically just a recap of that, but I thought it was important to note that there's kind of four main points. Strategic alignment, tourism marketing promotions operations being done directly within the city structural can better coordinate all economic development functions. Cost savings, the city could reduce administrative overhead of the organization and our management of tourism through our existing attorneys, IT auditing, accounting, providing office space, et cetera. I think our intent is that we remove those costs directly from T-bid assessed funds so that T-bid assessed funding can be more focused on the goal, which is more tourism promotions and marketing. There has been a question, I think, from council about, and even the community about, well, won't that cost the city more? When you talk about what we're going to be able to utilize our existing IT, so that's myself as the Director of IT and my staff member, Steve, we manage over 120 computers right now. Adding three to four more is a blip. It's not really necessarily an impact. We put it in our system and it's easily managed. We can remotely port in, we have the ability to use our own fiber. The same thing with our accounting, the funding, we actually technically already passed this funding through. We have the fund set up, we're ready to go to work on this. We already have an attorney who's working for us on many issues. The next point, this can reduce bureaucracy but maintain ability to act nimbly. Right now, there are multiple layers of governance with the city staff focusing on economic development and working off strategic planning framework of the council. While a separate tourism office is working off the policy framework of the Tourism Bureau, a separate 501(c)(6) organization, which we should note, we did create it, so we recognize that we did create this model. We're now reviewing how that's going and what we think about it. The ability to respond quickly to market authorities can be created by the fact that the city manager has spending authority to provide for quick execution of budgeted economic development expenditures up to a threshold of $125,000. As an example, the city was able to quickly commit to the Amgen Tour of California Bicycle Race because of this economic development efficiency and authority of the city manager. We can strengthen our connection with the T-bid Advisory Board. This model allows the city to enhance the Advisory Board involvement in strategy determination for citywide promotions and marketing. Currently, the T-bid meets quarterly for fiscal oversight while all decisions about tourism marketing and promotions occur monthly through the Tourism Bureau Board. This has in some ways caused questions in the community with many people kind of confusing the two bodies. People kind of talk back and forth about who's, what hat's on? Is it the Advisory Board? The T-bid Advisory Board is the Tourism Bureau Board? And so we do work hard, and I know they do too, to provide education regarding that, but it can be confusing. The alternative model retains the important function of the T-bid Advisory Board. It's really important we have that stakeholder group. Enhances their recommendation authority, it streamlines communications according with staff and council, and hopefully reduces that community confusion. I think it will having one board, one hat, and will reduce that confusion for the community. Based on the recommendation from management partners, the city could directly manage its tourism promotions and marketing to better strategically align this function with all economic development initiatives. This is the staff proposal. The resolution before council includes the following parameters, and so these are the bullets from that resolution. The city would no longer contract with the Tourism Bureau for its promotions. Instead, we would, the public aspects of tourism activities, including management of the assessment funds, would be executed internally by expert tourism professionals, which would not be the current staff of the city, I should be clear. You'll see another bullet coming up about that relationship, but we would have tourism professionals conducting that work. These experts would report to the Deputy City Manager, who's responsible for all aspects of economic development. Expert city tourism professionals will manage all tourism marketing promotions. This would include existing endeavors and work plan to be reviewed in a free firm by the T-bid Advisory Board and council. And obviously, you've received a draft of the upcoming one from the Bureau today. Just to be clear, I haven't seen that yet, so we didn't participate in the drafting of this one. I think in the future, we would hope that we would have more alignment on helping prepare the draft together. But we do have opportunity to comment on this one directly now prior to adoption later in the year. This also includes citywide brand management and destination promotion projects to enhance Mar-a-Lago Bay's marketability to further encourage hotel stays, support for community events that also promote the destination of Mar-a-Lago Bay, and other activities to be outlined in the future based on a multi-year strategic tourism plan, the annual work plan report, and ensuring the activities promote the destination of Mar-a-Lago Bay and actively support lodging stays. The existing Mar-a-Lago Tourism staff could be offered contracted service agreements as the city's expert tourism professionals or become city employees. City staff is hopeful the existing Tourism Bureau staff will accept this opportunity by the city, ensuring a smooth transition from the current model to the proposed alternate model. Staff suggests the council allow the city manager to determine the most appropriate method for staffing based on review of the budget and other important factors. I will say that we've received input literally both ways on this issue from the hoteliers. When we first said to them that we have employees, they did not like that. But there is some cost issues with that, obviously. We, city employees, have PERS. So then we tried to respond to that, suggested a contracted relationship, they didn't like that either. So we think that there's more, there's opportunities, whatever you decide, if you decide to go with staff's proposal and that resolution, that you delegate the authority to the city manager to make a determination about the appropriate way to have those tourism professionals conduct that on the city's behalf. The T-bid Advisory Board shall participate in the annual review of the city's tourism manager and will assist in setting goals and metrics to measure the success of the community's tourism promotions and marketing undertaken by this contracted professional. The Advisory Board shall participate in the selection of any future tourism manager hiring process. The T-bid Advisory Board would have enhanced duties that include not only general tourism market promotions, but any efforts to enhance the destination of Mar-a-Lago Bay as it relates to tourism. This can include citywide brand management, as you saw on the goals and objectives, we're talking about signage and branding of that. It just makes sense that the folks that are working to promote our destination have a say in what that destination looks like, and this is a good opportunity to provide some synergy there and some oversight. I think that it would be good for that tourism professional to help us with that, the feel and look of Mar-a-Lago Bay as well. Destination promoting, community event management review and more. The Advisory Board shall assist staff in developing the overall duties of the board. So these are hypotheticals, these are what could happen. We would like to ensure that our hotel stakeholder community and that board have a say in those duties and can bring a recommendation to you in the future. The city, this is staff's proposal related to committing funding of transient occupancy tax, which we collect in part thanks to the tourism promotions and marketing we do. The city shall commit $300,000 in TOT to the city's tourism operations. It's intended that the budget shall provide for this amount incrementally, with 20% of annual TOT increases being set aside for these purposes until the maximum is reached. The T-bid Advisory Board will provide recommendations through its annual report and work plan on the appropriate expenditure of this funding to City Council. Right now, kind of our basic projection is that we would reach that cap of $300,000 within about five years. This is, this is the model of the city of Pismo Beach, so they've set a threshold and they said, we're gonna, we recognize how important tourism promotion or tourism in general is to our community and investing in our product. And so they've said, I think they base it on 2010 levels, we're going to invest 10% of our TOT capped at this level, and they do that. It's between $500,000 and $600,000, I believe, this time, so it's fairly significant. Our first year also, we're suggesting that we would place $60,000 of TOT into that, and then each year after that, 20% of the annual TOT increase would go to it until we reach that threshold. So depending on how TOT goes, it could go faster. It could take three to four years. It could take longer, too. We have heard, though, I think, some excitement from the hotelier community that they believe that we will be doing very well in the future in terms of how our marketing's doing and bringing in more people. So we're feeling pretty confident about at least a five-year plan. The city's tourism professionals shall be provided office space in a city facility. And that facility, the intent of that is 695 Harbor Street, which is where the Chamber of Commerce is located. We really do believe in that partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and should this become city staff, we think it's important for that synergy to continue to happen. It's also cost savings, getting away from the existing facility. I think they spent at least $12,000 on their facility. I might be corrected on that later. It's very late. In order to focus as much of the T-bid assessment as possible on directly promoting and marketing of Mar-a-Lago Bay, again, the city shall provide for those administrative costs for accounting, legal advice, IT support. We already have those functions, so we would just be undertaking those. In order to transition to direct management of tourism operations, the city does not intend to extend its current contract to the Tourism Bureau. The city will coordinate a transition plan to direct management with the Bureau input. The city shall work with the local business community on the formation of an additional business improvement district that could include retail and restaurant businesses for the purposes of enhanced marketing of those businesses that help make Mar-a-Lago Bay the destination that it is. Consideration shall occur by January 1st, 2018. Obviously, we have heard from the hotelier stakeholder community that there's somewhat of a kind of a overarching conflict, or I don't really know the best way to put it, but basically, they do feel like they're doing a lot for tourism promotions and marketing. And I think we recognize, appreciate that there's that assessment in place that they're collecting, and they would be, I think, excited as a community, a stakeholder group, to see additional bids that can continue to enhance Mar-a-Lago Bay. We've also heard that from some of the local retail businesses as well, as well as the Chamber, with an interest in at least helping to coordinate the initial conversations on this. I think city staff also believes that additional bid could absolutely help us with additional funding outside of the general fund. And that's really the intent of these in the first place, is these districts were created to help supplement because jurisdictions were having a hard time through, for numerous reasons, with general fund. Getting a little bit more detailed on funding and staffing and the why $300,000, why, why take general fund money, which TOT money does come from those hotel stays, but it is a general fund revenue source. It's a very flexible revenue source, and the vast majority of jurisdictions frankly use it to enhance their current city, their current community. So we use this general fund to pay for police and fire, to go to those hotels and the other businesses in the community, and to our residential. We pay for our parks, you know, we pay for our streets. And all of these things are part of the destination of Mar-a-Lago Bay. So in some ways, we are helping to promote the destination through the existing level of service we provide. But I think staff continues to work towards council's direction on diversified economic engine. We still recognize how crucial tourism is to remain, remains to the local economy, and that investing in our most successful product is similar to the way a company would reinvest a portion of earnings into its product. Placing $300,000 of TOT into tourism shows a commitment to reinvest in our economy for further success. This funding will be placed incrementally, first year $60,000 projected, to be at the maximum of $300,000 within five years. So that's a little bit about, there likely will be community members wondering, why would we do this? And I think staff just wants to be very overt about why we believe tourism is important. We'll continue to work toward economic diversification, that's so crucial. We can't, we can't be overly reliant on this. We can be very thankful we have it. There are not many communities that have what we have for tourism. This is unique, and we're very lucky to be on the coast like this and to be Mar-a-Lago Bay. But there's a good reason to continue to invest and to see what we can do to maximize that investment while we work on additional economic opportunities. To contract or to hire, there are pros and cons to both approaches. This is a very kind of high-level, 60,000-foot view of those pros and cons. And again, I think we are recommending you delegate the additional review to the city manager. Contracting via consultant services changes the dynamic with the existing staff who would need to become businesses and get licensed. That could be considered onerous to those folks and stressful as well if they've never had a business or aren't incorporated now or have done consulting before. Contracting would be more cost-effective, that's a pro. It's easier to manage a contract with termination clauses as well. Obviously, there are unionized issues, depending on the type of employee they are and all that. There's less direct control over a contractor, though contracts can be written in a way to enhance accountability and expectation of this contracted person. I think we have heard from Pismo as well that they seem to have a direct one-on-one relationship with a contractor. I believe John Sorghum Frye is not, the advertising work he does now for Pismo in his contract, from what we understand, it's an exclusive contract. He does not work on those services for other jurisdictions based on that contract. Getting into hiring employees obviously will be more costly. Cost savings from providing direct administrative support could mitigate this cost increase nearly in whole, and that was addressed in the staff report. There's between $20,000 and $30,000 in cost savings in T-bid assessment because the general fund basically, our existing staff, our existing IT and administrative services would be providing those functions, along with bringing them to a city facility and not having that rental cost. When you look at what the cost of having to be a city employee would be, the savings from that in T-bid helps offset the increase in cost that they were a city employee. So we do have that to consider in terms of balance, in terms of hiring. It's easier, easier to directly manage employee in all aspects of work with a contractual relationship. You can't directly say you will work nine-to-five every day. You get into IRS issues, CalPERS issues, if you get that specific with a contractor relationship. With an employee, we can say when they'll work, we can say where they'll work, we can say how they'll work. It's much more direct. It's less onerous on existing Bureau staff because, again, they wouldn't have to deal with getting business license and all that. Council could resolve to directly hire this staff. Again, staff recommends delegating determination of best approach to city manager based on review of options and budget. In December, the T-bid Advisory Board reviewed staff's proposal, and basically just through general consent, unanimous consent, parliamentary procedure that we recommended, they just decided not to address our proposal. They weren't supportive of it, and instead, they offered up their own alternative proposal. Much of the proposal remains the same as the staff proposal, but there are some stark differences that I wanted to highlight. I put up here only the major differences because I thought that would make it less confusing to go through, rather than go through each bullet point in their resolution, which, again, many of them are identical, I wanted to go through the major differences. I'm thankful that Joan Solu is here to help. If you have questions specific to this proposal, I think it would be better for her to address those directly since this is their proposal. She can speak to why they may or may not have recommended something or why they opposed a portion of our resolution. So I'm thankful she's here. The Tourism Bureau, under their proposal, would remain in place and would be managing the city's tourism promotions and marketing. The professional staff remains the staff of the Bureau. The T-bid members proposed the Bureau staff would report to the city manager or their designee as well as a Bureau chairperson, vice-chairperson. We did have a question about that today, and we have had the city attorney consider that. We can get, maybe in the question phase, we can kind of address, I guess, what we think about that. I, before this, did not take any opinion approach with them. I wanted them to be able to make a proposal and did not have time at the time to obviously review this with the city attorney. So we can, we can discuss this a little bit more. Their proposal is different in terms of the TOT that would go towards tourism operations. Rather than $300,000, they're recommending $500,000, and I can't speak to why. The theory is that right now, we're at about $800,000, almost $900,000 for the T-bid assessment, and they believe that that will increase significantly. And so the funding amount that they're recommending kind of is in line with the increase in T-bid assessment as well as TOT. They think that, they feel that the $500,000 more, better matches, I guess, the increases that will happen or that they project to happen. The city would extend a, kind of in quotes, I put this because it's in their proposal specifically, a new deeply revised contract with the Tourism Bureau. The resolution related to the city tourism promotions and marketing would be attached to the full-time professional employees' contract. All tourism promotions and marketing business will be conducted by the T-bid Advisory Board, not the Bureau Board, and I think this is an important one. I think it's one that I talked to them about a lot was, again, getting back to that community confusion as well as just a kind of an efficiency thing. Monthly, they go to Bureau meetings, and then quarterly, we have T-bid meetings. It just seems to make sense that if we're working on the city's tourism promotions and marketing, that the T-bid Advisory Board do that work and that the Bureau Board can focus on its own internal issues on its own. So if they want to talk about their staff, they don't need to do that as one of our meetings. I don't need to be there for that, that's their staff. But when they're talking about the city's tourism promotions and marketing, we know we want to be more involved. We want to be able to have a better say over how the, it's our tourism promotions and marketing, we want to be able to be a part of that. So it makes sense for it to be the T-bid Advisory Board. In summary, city staff and management partners believe that bringing the city's tourism promotions and marketing back under the city umbrella can provide for better coordination and better long-term strategic alignment of all economic development functions of the city. The city must continue to be, to thoughtfully and robustly invest in tourism promotions and marketing as tourism remains the largest economic engine of the community. The City Council should provide direction related to the two different resolutions related tourism marketing promotions. Thank you for listening. I hope that wasn't too fast, but in the interest of efficiency.
No, that was great, Sam, thanks. So same process we've been doing all night as far as taking on questions and then opening up for public comment and bringing it back for discussion. Christine, will you start us off with questions?
Sure. It's a process question first, just for how we're going to facilitate conversation. So we have a staff report in front of us that was written by Mr. Taylor, but it has significant contribution from the T-bid board. So how do we want to incorporate that? You know, you just heard Mr. Taylor, there were specific questions to the information that he compiled in his report but didn't generate, so I'm wondering the best way to do that.
And writing T-bid up to make some comments on that?
Yeah, I think maybe they could.
Sure, that'd be helpful as far as.
Do you want to do that, like as if, like to have them just two general comments now or public comment? I'm not sure what we should do, but we should hear from that.
Yeah, so the suggestion would be instead of going through questions with Sam and then public comment and then questions, I think the large component is our T-bid portion of this and to invite the Tourism Bureau, whichever representative that may be, to come up and speak to some of the staff reports items. So with that, I'm in agreement to that. How about the rest of the board? So I don't know what Tourism Bureau representative might want to come up and speak to some of the staff report and the T-bid portion of the proposal?
Unless they choose, it's kind of optional, this, the choice is, no, we're all right, and we'll just do it and public comment.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do it.
Sure, sure. So if you want to add to some of the comments from the T-bid's perspective on the staff report, that'd be welcome.
Good evening, Joan Solu, your Mar-a-Lago Bay T-bid Vice Chair. Thank you for taking my comment. So I want to be clear, I'm speaking here right now as Vice Chair, this is not public comment. I just want to be clear with what you decided.
Sure, sure.
Is that correct? Okay, so just so I know what page we're on. Yeah, I, so going back, I just wanted to say that some of the comments that have been brought forward about administrative fees, some of them had to do with rent of an office building which we house, and the offer has been made by city staff that the staff that we all utilize as our professional destination marketing team could use the building at 695 Harbor? Thank you for the head shake over there. At 695 Harbor, there are some office spaces there, and we would be happy to enter into an agreement where the contractor, you know, could do something similar to the current contractor that's there for a dollar a year or whatever the rental agreement would be, which would significantly immediately cut the, cut the administration fees, you know, down. And I can't remember off the top of my head what that rent is, but I'm going to guess that it's somewhere between $10,000 and $12,000 a year. That lowers the percentage of administration fees almost, you know, immediately, hugely. So that offer and partnership from the city of Mar-a-Lago Bay is great, it's huge. That puts $10,000 to $12,000 more marketing impact out there that we can all utilize to lift the economy of the city. That's one thing. Rolling back, and I don't, could you actually, Sam, would you mind rolling the slide back a little bit for me? Thank you, I appreciate your help. Let's see. We did talk about, and I did have some questions today, I spoke with three of you in the last 24 hours with questions. I did have a question today that came to me and said, I don't really understand how somebody can jointly answer to somebody and have that work. It would be very similar, I think, to having Mr. Buckingham answer to probably the mayor and one other designee on council. I'm not sure maybe who that is in terms of, you know, day-to-day things. We work it now where our board is very comfortable, all the votes go through, everything's structured with budgets and very similar to the exact way any board is structured. And then for small items, let's say there's a, somebody's ill in the office, we just get a note saying, you know, Chair and Vice Chair so-and-so is ill today, I'll be in the office alone if for some reason you call and there's no, the answering machine is on, this is why, right? So it's very similar to if Dave is out of the office or something like that, he's letting someone on the council, I'm assuming probably two of you know, just to bounce off. So that, it would be very similar in terms of saying, I'm using that as a very blanket, easy-to-understand way, but you could have, let me roll back. The very reason that the Tourism Bureau exists is so that we can have The very reason that the Tourism Bureau exists is so that we can have a full-time destination marketing professional marketing no one but Morro Bay. The 501(c)(5) was created with the sole purpose of being able to have a contractor market Morro Bay. The entire purpose and guideline behind the Tourism Bureau, when you look at the bylaws and the mission statement, the mission statement is to solely lift the tourism economy in Morro Bay. Therefore, in order to have a full-time person who was not a city staff person, because we can't, couldn't really afford that, it's a lot more expensive for us, the city helped to form the Tourism Bureau so that we could have a professional tourism marketing team working without a lot of heavy overhead. If there are ways we can work together to reduce that overhead, we are happy to do that. I do know that, you know, CalPERS are very high. It's a huge consideration. I do believe that Mr. Buckingham and through Sam and the staff have probably reached out to about 75%, 76% of the hoteliers. I've talked to probably closer to 100% of them, or a consortium member has talked to them directly, too. So, I did want to let you know that there has been a lot of communication about this in the community. I will answer any questions you have. I'm not sure what direct questions you have about the proposal. I want to let you know that the Tourism Board, your T-Bid Board, in the city staff resolution, I would say that the proposal that we made to put forward was less of a denial of the city staff's efforts. We think that the efforts were good. It was more of a way of trying to find a solution where we could work together even further. It wasn't a denial or a no on what, 100% of what they had proposed. Rather, we wanted to take the places where we could completely agree and move those forward, and then work from there on some of the smaller things. And I can see here from the bullet point that there are really only five differences that are left between where city staff is coming from and where your tourism industry leaders are coming from. And if you have questions on any of those points, I will be happy to try my best to speak for the full board. Does that help?
Okay. Thank you. Good.
Okay, so, questions now? Yeah, I appreciate that.
That'd be great.
All right, super. Okay, so, it's just easier than asking Sam, who would then have to ask other people to come forward. Okay, so, there are some questions, discussions that I had today with many of the members of the Tourism BID, the T-Bid Board. In this capacity, they're operating as the T-Bid Board, dealing with this item, including the December 10 meeting was a T-Bid Board meeting. So, not the Bureau Board meeting. So, I'm trying to figure out the reporting structure. In the alternative from the city, the reporting structure for a full-time tourism professional would report directly into the city's structure. So, in the alternative from the T-Bid Board, the reporting structure for the tourism expert was listed as reporting to the Chair, the Vice Chair of the T-Bid Board, as well as the city manager or his or her designee. So, I was wondering, when you throw in the mix, it's fine for, and that actually personally to clarify, and then in the proposal, it says that that tourism marketing professional would be an employee of a 501(c)(6). So, then you're, what the option was for working closer together was putting a city staff person on the board and having that city staff person be involved in the supervision of a staff person who is a member of a 501(c)(6). So, I asked for some legal background on that, and how, in order to work closer together and to encourage direct oversight and day-to-day conversation and interaction between city staff and Tourism Bureau staff at this point, or we'll just refer to the tourism marketing professional that would work for the 501(c)(6), could a city staff person, number one, sit on a board for, of a 501(c)(6) that has a contract with the city, and two, would that person be able to supervise an employee that was not employed by the city? And Mr. Pinoni had a little head start on the question. So, if you wouldn't mind responding or clarifying my questions, thanks.
I'll do my best. With regard to the first question, on a city employee being a member of a private nonprofit, that can be done, however, it could create some conflicts of interest. And if the person who is the employee that was appointed to the board, that the city wanted to have sit on the nonprofit board, was also the person that the city wanted to have reviewing what that nonprofit was doing, you probably couldn't do that, because that person would then have a conflict, because he'd be a board member and reviewing the board. So, that wouldn't work.
And would it make a difference if it was the city manager, and, or would it make a difference if it was, let's say, the deputy city manager as the city manager's designee? Because it's not the ultimate staff role, or would it, it wouldn't matter?
That would, that would.
It wouldn't make, you couldn't say, "Well, the city manager can't do it," but, and his designee could do it. That wouldn't, that wouldn't.
That wouldn't change what I just said.
Right, okay.
If it was Scott, maybe that same, and Sam was still doing the contract review, that could work, but that's not what Scott does. So, I'm not sure that would work for you.
Right, I understand. Okay, and then, if we decided to roll the dice and say, "Well, you know what? We'll just recuse all the time." But is there a supervisory role that also, well, it sounds like one is precluding two, but if the city staff person were to sit on a 501(c)(6) board, could they supervise the 501(c)(6) employee even at a 50% oversight, for example? A shared supervision of a particular staff member that's not a city staff member?
I would be concerned with setting up a system where one individual is being supervised 50% by two different entities, or two different people. That seems very difficult for the person being supervised, as well as the people doing the supervising. And I would be concerned that if that person, even if that person was an employee of the Bureau, I would want us to investigate whether or not, if the city did have some employee sort of control, I would want us to get something in writing from CalPERS that said, "Even though that system is set up that way, and even though the person's this person's employee," I could see CalPERS saying, "Yeah, but really, they're also your employees, so the taxes are taken care of, but the Pers isn't, so the city may have to cover that Pers."
Even though they might not be a city employee?
There are certain criteria that the CalPERS uses to determine whether or not the person, forget the title, whether the person is a Pers-able individual.
Okay.
It's sort of the same criteria that the IRS uses.
Okay.
To determine whether someone's a tax, should be paying payroll taxes.
Okay. And then, how could a staff person interact with, if the 501(c)(6) board is a Brown Act board, then would it complicate matters having a staff person on a Brown Act board? That that staff person is then charged with, like, I guess what I'm saying is, you've got, the 501(c)(6) is a Brown Act board.
Correct.
As well as the T-Bid is a Brown Act board.
Correct.
So, to put a city staff person on a Brown Act board that has, that could happen if they didn't have a contract let with the city, it would be easier.
That wouldn't be an issue.
Right. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do you want to just open that up?
Just brought to my attention. It is 11 o'clock. We need to make a motion to go beyond 11 o'clock, so I would take a motion from Councilmember Heading.
I would, we would go past 11 o'clock.
At second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
None motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to my attention. Please continue. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Because the other questions were then, you know, about who would be responsible for the hiring and writing the evaluation and things like that. But I think it's pretty clear that that's not as easy as it seemed this morning, to add on a staff person to the current structure that exists at the Tourism Bureau Board, as had been, as it appeared to me was in alternative B.
Or, more specifically, does it have a joint management of that employee? I think it's not as easy as we thought before this morning, so.
That, yeah, my question is, it seemed easier this morning than it does now. Okay.
They're looking at all.
Well, isn't that always the case? It would be, oh, just teasing. Okay, so, okay, I would like to know, we talk in here about BIDs and additional BIDs, but originally, a little history on how we're talking about the Tourism Bureau marketing, and then it turns out we're talking about additional BIDs. It just remind me, is that something that staff put in the report, thinking that it might be a good time to talk about it, or just kind of, I'm wondering what additional BIDs have to do with this one that we're talking about now, you know, creating an option? Just sort of fleshing that out.
So, I think there's two parts to this. The first part is that I think staff does believe that there's a general economic benefit to additional BIDs in terms of additional revenue opportunities to enhance the city, the community, in whatever, in variety of ways. Depending on the type of BID, it could be an infrastructure BID. We could be doing a lot more improvements to streets, to sidewalks, putting out benches, just a lot of neat improvements to the destination. As we work to retain our quirky, quaint place, we still want to make sure it's not crumbling. And so, there's some opportunity there with a bid. I think that's the first aspect of it. The second aspect of it goes back to, as we had conversations with the T-Bid stakeholders, we heard, and I've heard for the last six months since I've been here, just, I guess, concern about one single group kind of carrying the load, and there being that opportunity for additional BIDs. And so, I think I noted fairly early in the presentation, a lot of what we tried to do with this, it does not appear to have been at all successful, was really try to alleviate some of the concerns and find a balanced approach to an alternative, to recognize that what we are talking about is the city taking over its operations, but making sure it's done in a way that's reasonable and working still in partnership. And this is something they were interested in. We've heard interest, at least to start the discussion, from some retailers and the chamber. And so, it, to us, it made sense as part of this to show our commitment to our stakeholder community and other partners.
Okay. And then, if the city were to absorb, if the city were to create a new staff person, absorbing the staff person who exists currently for the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau, what are we talking about in terms of fiscal year 16, '17 cost?
So, the staff of the, the tourism staff are currently paid for, obviously, out of T-Bid assessment, and that would not change. That's their function, that's the intent of that funding, it's allowed to be used that way, it's clearly being used that way. So, in terms of the general fund, there would be no necessary expenditure related to this staff, it would remain part of the T-Bid assessment. We are, however, proposing $300,000 over a certain period of time, $60,000 the first year, in general fund money. And that money has the ability to be used in a much more flexible way than T-Bid assessment, because the assessment must be used very specifically, based on city code and state law. And so, there's an opportunity with that TOT funding to have the T-Bid Board make a recommendation to council on how it can be used. And so, just hypothetically, I'm not saying this is how we would use it, but hopefully we would have some discussions on the best way to use that money. It could be used to alleviate those administrative pressures of the staff. Maybe the general fund TOT helps with that. So, again, additional money in T-Bid assessment can be maximized for tourism promotions and marketing and operations. Regional marketing is another one. We don't, I think there's currently focus on outside because of the amount of funding we have. And so, there's just other opportunities to use that TOT in that way. So, as of now, the answer is, there's no funding planned from the general fund for this staff. It's T-Bid assessment funds, it would remain that way.
Okay, and then, how, and a two, one full-time employee and how many employees currently in the Bureau?
I believe three part-time.
Three part-time?
Correct. So, they have a sales manager, and then, Brent, you might want to speak to this, I don't want to get it wrong. Hospitality coordinator, and then an administrative staff person, I believe. Brent Hoggan, Morro Bay Tourism Bureau. We actually have, myself is the full-time, we have a part-time sales manager, we also have a very part-time promotions coordinator, and currently, we are looking to fill a position for the sales and hospitality coordinator, which is also part-time. The breakdown of hours, currently, right now, the sales manager is about 30 hours a week. The sales and hospitality coordinator would range between 20 to 25 hours a week, and then our promotions coordinator is in between eight to 16 hours per week.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think the question I heard you ask, Councilmember Johnson, was what would be the effect on the general fund?
Yes.
And specifically with regard to salaries. And Sam answered most of that, but I'll also say, one of the reasons that we recommend, should you choose to go to a different model, that you, let me determine how to bring the expert tourism folks on, whether it's in a contract mode or a employee full-time equivalent mode, is to give me the flexibility to figure out the right and best way to do this, both for the employee and for the city. And I would want to, my goal would be to, as soon as possible, hire and get a commitment, either as an employee or as a contract, with the entire staff that's there, and to be able to provide no change to their compensation. And how we would do, you know, I just need to assess whether a contract or employee is the best way to do that in the near term and in the long term, and it could change. And so, it's hard to project exactly what the effect would be on the general fund, but more important to me is to say, we would want to have a similar, very similar, nearly identical commitment that they currently have in their current positions.
Okay, great. Thank you. At this point, those are my big questions. Everything else is pretty straightforward about where people stand, but thank you.
Matt?
Sure. I have, I do have a few questions. And Joan, some of these questions might be directed towards you, and then Sam, and then, actually, Dave, you just brought up something. In terms of this entire negotiating process, in terms of the city, Sam, and Brent, coming up with the staff direction that, as you've written up, and then looking at the comeback from the T-Bid folks, it doesn't look like, looking up here, it doesn't look like we're so far apart in doing this. So, Dave, I'm going to go to you first. You just mentioned, in terms of this agreement, if it does move forward, if we do center it around the city manager being the top of the tier, then you would determine with T-Bid folks, in terms of which would be best, the contractual employee or the full-time employee?
I would absolutely get great advice from the T-Bid, the advisory body. I would do that in general, and I would do that in particular at this time, since they have the best understanding of the current employees. But this is a commitment to have a well-empowered tourism business district advisory board, and I wouldn't want to make any decisions that involve tourism without the advice of that board.
Okay. No, that's just, okay, that's why I thought you were going with that. And Joan, this next question is for you, if you don't mind. And in terms of the city putting forward that they were willing to put that $300,000 in additional monies up, and your answer back was, you, the T-Bid side of things would be saying, "We want a larger commitment, $500,000 over that same period of time." Could you explain, besides the obvious, we're wanting more money from the general fund of the city, why it would help the T-Bid process, why you went to that amount of money?
So, I want to be clear, it was not me personally. It was.
No, no, no. And it was not. And believe me, I'm just.
It was us as an advisory body.
Did you just flip a coin?
Right. We made a unanimous vote, so I want to be just clear about that. So, you know, we put that together as unanimous vote. The methodology behind there, we looked at the chart that Sam and David and probably Susan or someone else, you know, they all worked together as a team and put together. And the assessment district is about 700 and And the assessment district is about $780,000 this year. $300,000 would be roughly a little over a third. We said, you're, you're looking at it and you're saying, we're going to put roughly a little, we're going to get to a little over a third of where you're, literally over, a little over, I can do this, a little over a third of where we are currently at, at the end of five years. We looked at it and said, what, our projections, projections, and again, these things can go up and down, but our projection, projections are that we will be roughly somewhere between $1,200,000 and $1,400,000 in assessment district dollars at the end of five years. Knock on wood for all of us, right? That that occurs. And we're saying, why don't you meet us at, again, if you're willing to make that investment, let's look at that five, let's look at that, let's make a good, hard investment at $500,000, which is roughly a third, right? A little over a third. And in that, we also, I don't know whether you saw the piece where we pointed back and said, allow us to be strong advisors in what occurs in the visitor center. You know, some of those funds, the visitor center is so important to this community, and specifically if general fund money is coming towards that, towards tourism as an overall arcing, it's always been, or it has been a goal of the city to put everything in tourism under one umbrella, and I think that's what we're hearing still, right? Under one umbrella, under economic development, under a tourism management-type structure. That would include likely the visitor center. And so, you know, some of those funds could include some operations for visitor center and some, some of the things that happen in a visitor center. Not sure if you're aware that, you know, $20,000 to $30,000 in printing money can occur for brochures to fulfill for a visitor center annually. That's not included in a visitor server, visitor service contract for the visitor center currently. That's provided by the Tourism Bureau for the, or the T-Bid Board funds, the T-Bid assessed funds for the entire city. So that's where we were going with that $500,000, Matt. Does that answer?
No, that makes sense, and I understand, well, if you could stay there, because I have another follow-up question, because Joan and I did speak to, about this in the last few days, yesterday in fact. But in terms of talking about this, and understanding the skin in the game, in terms of the city putting more money towards the process, and then the T-Bid side, the hotelier side saying, okay, the city is investing more into this, would that, do you think that's a negotiable point in terms of granting some control or control over the process, over the T-Bid to the city manager? And so you don't have to say necessarily, and so is that a point they could take back to T-Bid and take back to staff, to where those points could be negotiated out further?
Sure, and I would hope that those points would be negotiated out further than the T-Bid, but down into the consortium, because it's really those folks who come back and vote on whether to approve this in May. So really, they have to be good with it, and then we, as a T-Bid, have to hear from them, and hear from the whole community, and try and bring that together, and then bring that forward, and bring the next step together too. That's what we've been trying to do here. We've been trying to hear from our hotel constituents, and hear from the rest of the community, and come up with something that is going to work for everyone. It's, that's where we're at.
And Dave and Sam, what do you envision the time on this process to be, in terms of going through this entire process?
Just to confirm the transition, so that the current contract with the Tourism Bureau expires in May, we have, that should you make a decision tonight, then we have four-plus months to do a great transition. I want to start working on that transition tomorrow morning, and to, to have a great transition plan. And then, beginning in May, instead of the TOT, excuse me, the T-Bid assessment monthly checks going to the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau, they would stay in a, as Sam described, essentially a special account, an enterprise fund account, like the Measure Q account, or the Harbor account, in the, in the general fund, and would be executed based on the approved budget annual plan for the T-Bid Assessment District.
Okay, thanks. I'm finished for now.
Thanks, Matt. John?
My questions are for Mr. Davidson. Chuck, if you would.
Thank you for coming tonight, by the way, I really appreciate that. Could you explain why the TMD was formed in the county of San Luis Obispo?
Sure. Chuck Davidson, President and CEO of San Luis Obispo County. The, the structure of the TMD was really focused around, A, being able to compete with the competitive counties that surround us. We really look at Monterey, Santa Barbara, Sonoma, and Napa, Sonoma and Snapa, really based on wine region, and the wine region that we have here, Monterey and Santa Barbara, based on the coastal assets that we share with them. So it was, one, focused around that, and, two, focused around the ability to be able to sell the region as a holistic destination. As you know, here in Morro Bay, you guys have done an amazing job here, but what has happened over the last couple of years, up, leading to the approval of the TMD, is the cities were actually competing against each other. So everybody was marketing to, you know, Los Angeles, San Francisco, the Valley, saying, come to Morro Bay, come to Pismo Beach, and instead of capitalizing on the assets of the region and getting people to come to the destination and maybe stay here, but go down to Pismo Beach to go to the beach, or go up to Paso to visit wine country, it was, it was essentially cannibalizing the market. And so the focus around the TMD was to be able to do, one, for your communities, what you can't do for yourselves. So we're not looking to go spend a ton of money in the valley where you can advertise on your own. We're looking, you know, part of our advertising campaign, the million-dollar campaign that we just launched in November, is spent in places like Las Vegas and Phoenix, and deep areas into Southern California and into the Bay, that you can't afford to market on your own, but that we can do holistically as a larger organization. So it was focused on those initiatives, to do for you what you can't do for yourselves, to paint the industry, to paint the region as a holistic destination that people could come and visit, and to connect the dots really for the consumer. It's amazing, by simple way of example, our current marketing agency is based in Fresno. I was in Fresno a couple of months ago, talking to an individual who doesn't work on our account but works for the agency, they didn't realize that Paso Robles was in San Luis Obispo County. They know Paso Robles, they know San Luis Obispo County, didn't realize that they were in the same area. So our goal is to help connect the dots for the consumer on all the assets that exist in the county.
And, and in doing that, would you describe what you're doing as more of a branding initiative, as opposed to just marketing and promotion?
Yeah, so, so we look at, we look at things really twofold. We look at trying to create immediate results, which would take place, what we call immediate is the next six to 12 months, and then we look at long-term initiatives. And so immediate results are this million-dollar campaign that we currently have running in the feeder markets. Long-term initiatives are the partnership that we have with you, and that Dave and Sam helped tremendously with, and we have a first meeting on tomorrow here in your community, and that's things like Amgen. Amgen isn't going to produce heads and beds tomorrow, it's not going to produce heads and beds the day that the event happens. It's going to get national and international television exposure that's going to drive people to come here for years in, in the future. So we do look at it as a branding initiative. We're trying to, we, today, our marketing committee approved the presentations from two research agencies, which will present next Tuesday, and go to our board next Wednesday for approval. It's a $140,000 research initiative to understand the demographics of the consumer that are coming to our market. It's interesting, if you talk to most people, they say most of our consumers come from Los Angeles, San Francisco, and the Valley. If you talk to the Paso Robles Wine Alliance, 20% of their customers come from Texas. It's amazing to me that no, none of the customers in the county come from Texas, but 20% of the wine customer comes from Texas. Doesn't make any sense, right? We have to solve that initiative, understand who those consumers are, and get that out there. The second portion of that research is awareness. It's, it's getting into our feeder markets and understanding what they perceive of our county, what they perceive of our assets, why they travel here, or more importantly, why they choose not to travel here. So those are the components that really help us understand our brand, and who it is that we're trying to present ourselves as.
Great. Would you consider your, your effort strategic or, or operational?
I would consider it 110% strategic. We're focused on big-picture initiative. Our, our success on a five-year, different than your current '89 structure of your district, where you're on a one-year renewal. As you know, our district is on a five-year renewal. We're not being measured by what we accomplish tomorrow, we're being measured by what we accomplish strategically over the next several years, before we come back to you for renewal before 2020.
And, and am I correct, and as you went through this, it was the assumption that all cities in the county be a player and have a place at the table because of the importance of understanding their unique benefit that they bring to the county?
Absolutely. You may remember, we had some pain points here in Morro Bay specifically, where there's an opportunity that Morro Bay may opt out, and that was a huge pain point for us. There is only one rock, that rock is now a major feature in Visit California's TV spot, both nationally and internationally. That would have been a lost opportunity for us as a county, but more importantly, for all of you, and probably more importantly than that, for all the people in the United States and the world who get to see that spot. So yes, it's a major point for us. Rising tide does float all boats, regardless of whether or not, you know, you understand it, I mean, it does, right? And so for us, we have to pitch all the assets. All the assets are extremely unique. That's what makes our county so great, that's why I put up our county against Monterey and Santa Barbara every day of the week, or we have more assets than them holistically, but we have to sell them individually.
Do you think that the individual communities, if they had continued doing what they were doing in terms of their own promotion and marketing, could have achieved, or would be able to achieve, the strategic initiatives that you laid out?
I don't, for a couple of reasons. One, just by sheer numbers alone, you would have never had the funds that are available through a county-wide initiative. You can't get there, right, with one individual community. Secondly, I think, you know, the longest-standing T-Bids in the market were about five years ahead of the district being formed from a county initiative, continued to lose ground on a year-over-year basis to the competitive counties that surround us. So there was nothing in the plan that suggested, based on that five-year run rate, that you were going to get any closer, you were simply falling behind every single year as individual communities.
I really appreciate you, excuse me, really appreciate you coming up and sharing your insights, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Yes, a couple of, actually, pretty simple questions, I think. One, I just want to confirm if, if we do go with the proposal, and it turned out that the in-house employee concept was, made more sense for multiple different reasons, that that most likely would come in as a third tier in the CalPur system, new hire?
Almost certainly. I mean, we, from one perspective, we don't have a choice about that, except we do have a choice in who we hire, but if we were, if somebody were to apply for the position, they were absolutely the best candidate, and they happened to be coming from a position in a city and they were a tier one, then they would come in as a tier one, or if they're a tier two, they're coming as a tier two. But I, I will continue to state very publicly that my hope is that the entire expert staff that is employed by the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau right now will be the staff that is, that is working for the city of Morro Bay directly. And so I think in that, in that case, knowing those, those folks, they would come in at tier three.
Which would be still a fairly nice package, but not as expensive to the city as the older packages that we worked so hard to get away from, because those were the unsustainable versions of retirement packages for employees.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Okay, and then, just to confirm, there's nothing in here that, in either track, that would move us away from the strict rules about expenditures. You've said that, but I think it's really important to say it again, expenditures of the assessed funds.
That's correct. Until you change the ordinance, nothing changes.
Okay. And then, just briefly, because I think it was just mentioned, and it's, it's more of a bigger-picture, longer-term discussion, but the concept of, of renewal and how the cycle could change from our current one-year assessments, and improvement of that assessment, to a longer-term cycle like the county TMD utilizes to be a little less reactive and focusing more on longer-term results. How, how would you see us engaging in that? I saw that there was a bit of discussion about that at the December 10 meeting, but I think it's important for tonight, just to, just to briefly be aware of, of where we could be going in that, regardless of which way we go tonight.
Yeah, and the, and the T-Bid Board is supportive of that, that's included in their resolution as well, is to transition away from the '89 law to go to the '94 law. So in a way, you're almost scrapping the existing T-Bid and adopting a new one. The, the benefit of the 1994 law, there's, there's a few benefits. I think the one they're most, they're most interested in is the fact that it's a five-year law. And frankly, it gets us away from this kind of annual heartburn that we have regarding the renewal of the assessment itself, because that's what you're talking about every year, what you're doing is consideration of the, the assessment. And there, there are some, some municipalities view it as, if they, if, if, if the stakeholder community says no to the assessment one year, technically you could reconsider it the next year, it's just like a one-year hiatus. I've learned that from the attorney who does a lot of the stuff for, for those, for the bid folks. The other benefit of a '94 law is it does provide additional flexibility in how you can expend the funds. I don't know that they're necessarily supportive of that for this type of bid, but, but it is an option for other bids as well. That's, that's where you get into infrastructure improvements and all that, because the legislature and the folks advocating for those types of bids recognize the value of making sure, again, that your product is not crumbling, because people don't want to come to a destination like that.
Could you just talk a little bit about how you would see if there, do you see any differences with the, with the discussion and then potential adjustment to the '94 law and the, and the five-year cycle? How, it seems like we're going to want to have that conversation regardless of which way we go tonight. Do you see any major differences, though, in how we would approach that conversation, whether we stick with something similar to what's being, what we're currently utilizing, or the alternative proposal, or the staff concept?
Yeah, and I think, so, staff's proposal technically did not include that section of theirs, only because they kind of set ours aside in the consideration of theirs. Staff's fully supportive of going to the '94 law, so if you feel, if you, if you believe the staff proposal and the resolution is appropriate, staff is fully supportive of you modifying that same section related to that and saying, we also are interested in reviewing the '94 law. It, it does just make sense, it's a longer track, and it, we're, we continue to talk about strategic alignment, strategic thinking, long-term thinking, and that '94 law allows us to continue to be tactical and thinking long-term about these issues.
You have some comments, I can tell, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I, this is a great conversation, and sort of like from the last item, the Embarcadero and parking and different projects, all of these things are, there's a number of things that are impact, and we should be, we should have them in mind, but I don't want to get too focused on those other things right now with the decision that's in front of you. You know, I think my, my, my guidance or request would be, let's consider this decision, but as we said, the hoteliers are interested in transitioning to a '94 law, the staff sees, sees benefit in that, and some of the other things, I said before, without getting too far, sorry, I was sort of born a visionary, so I think this direction. There's been talk about retail bid, restaurant bid, other sorts of bids in the community, if perhaps there are other stakeholder groups in the community that would, that will organize, maybe under the leadership of the Chamber of Commerce, and what we might see in a year or two or three is a transition from a hotel-only '89 law to a broader bid '94 law that tied in several different stakeholder groups. And I'd also note that, that this, just like we have now, the state law says one thing, but you, the city council, can always adopt additional ordinances that, that provide direction for how those funds are to be used. So I would be generally concerned right now if I heard infrastructure first, because that is not, that is absolutely- right now if I heard, "Infrastructure," first, because that is not, that is absolutely not the staff's intent, is to be using any T-Bid assessed funds for any infrastructure kind of projects. But if you went to a 94 law, you could write, you know, you could write those things out with a local ordinance, essentially. I don't know if that helps, probably muddies the water, but.
Okay. I know Christine, you have to follow. I just want to address a couple of questions, and maybe similar to the parking questions, you know, we're kind of teed up in similar, so, not to get too muddied into the water, but I think that draws, in hearing you say that, you know, if we go into the 94 law, we can write code that would be different, my understanding is, so are you suggesting that the, we could rewrite the structure of the T-Bid ordinance to include infrastructure? Is that what you were implying?
What I was, what I was concerned about is that, I'll look to Joe here, I think I got this right, is that you can always make things more restrictive. And I have heard concern from hoteliers of, are you going to take over the T-Bid and use all those assessed dollars to fix the streets? No. I don't think that's, certainly not my intent. I don't think that's your intent.
And I just wanted to clarify that, because I think that needs to be clarified, not just from you, but from the council.
Right.
I don't feel as though that's any intent at all. The T-Bid structured solely for hoteliers, marketing, tourism. I have no thoughts of doing anything different personally. And I think we've had plenty of discussion just here tonight on goals, an aquarium, all kinds of different things that have everything to do with tourism, marketing, branding, our product here, so I, I just want to make sure.
I just felt compelled to say that, because Sam said the infrastructure word, and I want to be careful that that's not, first, we can't do that under this law. You could, I guess, under the 94 law, but you could always, as a council, adopt a local ordinance that said, "But we're not going to do that."
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting too sideways on that. I'll defer my final questions. Are you okay with that? With that, I think I'll just move on to public comment, and then get into some more discussion, and maybe even some more questions after discussion. But I'll open a public comment. For those who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening. Again, Brent Houghan, Executive Director for the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau, Mayor Irons, City Councilmember, City Staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to make public comment tonight. I did actually provide, based off of the request, to provide the marketing and sales plan draft, so that way you guys would have an opportunity, as well as city staff, to be able to provide feedback. It also provides an opportunity for you guys to understand the process as far as like getting the plan approved. The current T-Bid Advisory Board will be receiving this plan on Thursday, and then I will have that available for the general public. I'll send information to Ms. Swanson, as well as posting that on the morrobay.org website. So that way, the rest of the stakeholders, as well as the public, would be able to get a chance to see that, get a sense and a feel of as far as like where the plan, where we're looking at going, but also understanding that we do want to get feedback from stakeholders as well.
May I just make a, ask a question, or make a comment? Sorry for interrupting. What I heard was, you were sent something to review to give comments on? If that's what I heard, you can't make those comments unless you do it in a public meeting. So it needs to be on an agenda.
This right here?
No, I just provided a printed copy for council, so that way they would get a chance to be able to review, not to make comment tonight, but to be able to do feedback at a later date.
And if you want to do that, you'll need to agendize that to give feedback.
As a council?
Correct.
Got it.
Okay. Oh, not a problem.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes. So kind of moving forward here, you know, I, tonight, and the person who's actually standing in front of you has 13 years of experience in the tourism industry. When we look at that respectively, I worked 11 years in Minneapolis, worked in that market, not only for Tourism Group Tour, but I also worked in, helped with meetings and conventions, and also sports marketing, and did kind of the general overall marketing and communications plan for the organization in Minneapolis. We were a destination that represented a regional area. And not to discount Mr. Panoni on what he talked about as far as like having a city appointment, but we represented 11 city area, and we had on our Board of Directors, city managers, mayors, we had other city appointments. There wasn't a conflict of interest as far as that. When you're looking at the board, you're looking at the big-picture type of items. So a lot of the day-to-day operations really kind of focus in on my role as being executive director. When it comes to what the board is looking at doing, they're looking at the bigger picture, policies, bigger picture, strategic, you know, where we're going to be going within the next three to five years. So I just wanted to highlight that. But at the same time, I believe that in the two years that I've been here in Morro Bay, that I've proven to have an inclusive philosophy when it comes to working with the business community, as well as organizations. I feel like that has extended outside of the walls of Morro Bay. You know, there were some pain points, as Mr. Davison had indicated with Visit San Luis Obispo County, but we've been able to get over those issues and to be able to work and partner together. Very exciting about some of the opportunities that have been provided by Visit San Luis Obispo County for the city of Morro Bay. But greater than that, we've been able to work with other destinations throughout the state of California as well. I do come to Morro Bay with an outside perspective. Lived here for about three years, again, had the Minneapolis market opportunity of working there, seeing the perspective. I've seen a lot of different models across the United States. I've seen it under government, I've seen it under, you know, 501(c)(6), I've seen it under county. And as a destination marketing professional, the model that I've seen that has been most successful has been a separate 501(c)(6) nonprofit. There's a lot of reasons for that, and I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have time to get into the minutia as far as that. But I really want the council, as well as city staff, to be thinking about, it's about being competitive globally, not locally. And I think when we're only looking at the other county entities and not really looking at it as a global perspective, most the United States has a 501(c)(6) that they're under. That is the reality. As far as like some of the other points that you guys actually brought up, we would definitely welcome an investment from the city, but also looking at the oversight, including city staff, city council, as well as the T-Bid Advisory Board. I'm also very welcome to look at, you know, how can we reduce administrative costs under the current format? You know, we have talked about, you know, perhaps moving our location to the chamber. But just kind of lastly, because I have run out of time, but as a destination marketing professional, I would strongly urge council to consider the T-Bid Advisory Board recommendations on making the modifications under the current structure, because we can make that happen. You know, anything can definitely happen. And again, by having that inclusive attitude, and also working with council, working with city staff, I think we could definitely be successful down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Joan Solu. My husband and I are small business owners here in Morro Bay. We own the Embarcadero Inn. And I've been on your Tourism Business Improvement District Board for about six years. I'm rotating off the board at the end of this month, and I want to thank you for allowing me to have that service. As note, I'm aware that the city CalPERS came in at about $175,000 above budget, or unbudgeted for, as kind of a surprise. Please ask yourself if this is the right time to be adding city staff, that will add additional CalPERS cost burden to the city. Regardless of whether it comes from the T-Bid budget, or from the general fund budget, as you've noted, this is all community funding. So please ask yourself that question. You all know how I feel about the city proposal to take over the hoteliers' assessment funds, so I'm not really going to waste your time telling you what we have already discussed, either individually, or in public or group settings. Instead, I'm going to let the petition, which was signed by every hotel owner or their representatives on behalf of the owners, speak for the entire hotel consortium in this community. You all received an electronic copy of the petition, of the hotel consortium support for the, for the T-Bid proposal. You received that today. For the public's information, I'm going to read the text of the petition. The petition reads, "I would like to see the city of Morro Bay extend the management contract for the operations of the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District Assessment Funding with the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau. I am opposed to the city of Morro Bay restructuring tourism management to be run directly by city staff, and, and, I'm sorry, and I believe that the city should support the Morro Bay T-Bid Advisory Board recommendation, and that the city should adopt it. The fact that all 35 hotel motel owners or their representatives signed this petition, 100% of an industry in this community, should make it very clear to the five of you and city staff and stakeholders, and that the stakeholders who are asking their guests to pay this assessment are opposed to the city's proposal to take complete control of tourism marketing over. Mr. Buckingham, I have the original copy of the petition for you. I would like it included in the record. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you."
I'll have a question after a public comment is complete. Anybody else for public comment, please?
Susan Stewart, once again. So I watched much of the Bureau, was it the Bureau meeting or the T-Bid meeting that I watched? I do get confused about that. But the December meeting where they were discussing this. And I really saw it as a really great effort at communication and compromise. The two proposals do have a lot in common, and overall a reasonable general direction. What the T-Bid Board proposal has going for it is that it's the result of a conversation between professionals in the tourism community, and therefore addresses the nuances and marketing concerns that can best be understood by those in the industry. I do have some concerns about Item 9, under both the T-Bid and staff proposals, for the development of additional bids that could or would include retail, restaurant, recreation, vacation rental RV parks and campgrounds, and property businesses for the purposes of enhanced marketing. With all due respect to both staff and T-Bid Board members, I don't believe enhanced marketing by a general bid is what we need. I also think it would complicate and confuse the delivery of our promotional message. Each of us, as businesses, knows our market and reaches out to that group. We could and do benefit from cooperative advertising opportunities, something which the current marketing organization has created. And I am a big believer in general regional marketing, which could and should have a similar message to our tourism marketing, and could easily be covered by the generous proposal of the city to provide general fund monies. We do not need duplicate and possibly contradictory efforts. If other bids were formed, I would much rather see the money be used and managed for the direct enhancement of the physical environment, more attractive landscaping, sidewalk improvements, tree trimming with artistry rather than a formula, holiday decorations, public art, gateway signage, maritime and historic displays, parking lots, and so on. In other words, for the improvement and benefit of our product, which then our tourism bureau can take to market further afield. I do question whether bringing T-Bid staff under the city then is paid for by T-Bid monies, and are their benefits also paid for by T-Bid money? So we are still taking funds from promotional marketing and having to put it elsewhere rather than direct promotion. That's a concern to me. I'm hopeful that we continue with some creative ideas for this. I'm hopeful that you do listen to your tourism experts in this. When I sat on the Promotions Committee, we always had the city manager at our meetings. We had our Board making decisions. We had our advertising agency there. I like the direction of having an actual marketing expert who is with us every day for a full-time job. So I do hope that that kind of thing continues, and believe in the city partnership with this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any more public comment? Seeing none. Joan, I just wanted to follow up on a question. You said, do you have any questions? And I just want to have, I have a question on the, what was it, the petition that was signed by the hoteliers? Thanks for sending that out. So did I understand you saying that they were signed by the owners or their representatives?
May I? Almost, I think one, possibly two, were signed by representatives with their owner's approval.
Okay.
Because the owners are out-of-town owners, and so they were contacted directly, had conversations with a consortium partner, and gave their approval. And then, what happened was, specifically with one of them, they, the manager wanted to make sure it was absolutely okay. And so the manager telephoned up that owner, who was out of town on vacation, spoke with them directly, and signed it. And under our T-Bid, the way our T-Bid is structured with the city, it can be an owner or the owner's representative.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for that. I guess I can close public comment on that, if there's no more, no more public comment. Is there anybody out there for public comment? Seeing none? I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion. And Christine, would you start us off on discussion?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's a lot to absorb. You know what, I'm just going to need a minute to pull my notes together, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can wait, but I just wanted, I was just observing all of that.
Okay. I guess I'll, I just want to make one comment on the, the reason I asked the question, Joan, is after getting the petition, I walked to many of the hotels today on the list, and was talking to their representatives and some of the owners that were there. Many of them, as you know, aren't. You know, there are quite a few that are out of town. But some of the conversations, a little surprising, I didn't get the, I didn't get the feeling that, at least some of the brief conversations, that there was full understanding of what, of really what was going on. So I just, I think it's important to discuss that. And I could, I think it's, you know, it's also, and I can understand, you know, I can understand that as well, just from many of the, some of the, you know, over the years, I've heard some of the comments from you as well, you know, who's participating on the T-Bid Board. You know, we're trying to get more T-Bid Board members, and some of the hoteliers that weren't, you know, participating. So it was actually kind of challenging in some cases, just to get members, some of our hoteliers, to come up and participate. So when I, some of the conversations I had today, I was just a little surprised at their lack of knowledge or understanding of this particular issue. So that was, you know, just a little, you know, a little alarming for me. So I just, you know, I just had to clarify some of that. And I don't mean, I'm not casting aspersions at all. I'm just saying I had, I just felt as though there was a misunderstanding from what was going on for signatures. So that's, that's all, you know, all I had to say on that. And I'll lead it back to Christine for her conversations, and then get into some of the discussion.
Okay, thanks. Well, I appreciate the time that everyone has taken on the item, especially our volunteers who have been on the Tourism Bureau Board. Well, they're on both. They're on the T-Bid Board and the They're on the T-Bid Board and the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau Board. They volunteer their time and they're committed to their community and they're also committed to their, their industry. And they've spent hours on this as the council has asked our staff to reevaluate the current structure. And it's turned out that there's been a lot of work coming both directions, but certainly quite a bit back from the volunteers. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the time that everyone on the board, the T-Bid Board, spent with me in the last two days reviewing their comments from, especially the December 10th meeting and other opinions they have about marketing and the city in general and this particular topic. So I do appreciate that extra time. I also spent two years, 2013 and 14, as a liaison to the Tourism Bureau and the Tourism Bid Board. And I feel that as far, as far as a council member goes, that those were educational years and tried to understand as much as possible about that aspect of our, of our community. And I value greatly the ability that a small group, you know, if you, you heard how many? 35 individual business owners or, right? Well, some have multiple properties, but you know, we're talking about a smaller group and how mighty you can be if you pull your resources and you put your mind to something. And I think that that is a good example for moving forward. It's almost amazing to me that legally the government even allows you to create a BID because it doesn't very seem, it seems a little bit radical. But it's been a big benefit to the City of Morro Bay and to all other cities with BIDs. So I want to appreciate that and I feel like I've learned a lot from you. And I also have tried to pay attention specifically because this is our number one economic driver. In other cities, you might see property taxes number one, but for Morro Bay, it is our TOT taxes number one. You know, there are three revenue sources, right? TOT, property tax, and sales tax. And for Morro Bay, our sales tax is in third place, followed by our property tax at two and then our TOT at one. And that is unusual. And that's even unusual in other coastal communities. We're small, so we don't have, you know, a large industrial base or other things like that. So that is perhaps why. But it's definitely our largest source of income. And that TOT is 10% of the total 13. So why, I understand, I understand that the BID members, the stakeholders, they're very focused on that 3% and how that 3% gets used and spent and is it spent appropriately? And are they getting a return on investment? And that's the same responsibility I would take for, for the 10% to ensure that what we're, what we're gathering from our visitor in terms of the transient occupancy tax is going back to the resident and the business owners who have property here. So to turn that back into the community, so I feel responsible for really the whole 13%, specifically the 10 going into the general fund directly and then the 3 that turns around into marketing and appreciate the self-assessment that the hoteliers are willing to do. So Management Partners did kick this idea around since 2008. So this isn't something that this council developed last year in goal-setting. This was a 2008 Management Partners recommendation. Management Partners has had a long life and it's gone on forever here in this community. People often referred to it. This past year, we had an update and a renewal and as you know, we got an additional budget tool out of the Management Partners review. So this one did come back again and it did stay on the Management Partners recommendations that the city take a look at it. But it is certainly not new and has been around since 2008. And actually, it predates then the creation of the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau that was created around 2011 and 13. You know, I did attend some of those public meetings. I think they were held sort of in the daytime. I wasn't elected yet, probably hadn't even considered, well, hadn't declared for sure at that point. But, you know, did watch that process as it was an interesting process and very important at that time. And we've heard this since then through public comment many times is that in the years 2011, the city decided to review other models for marketing tourism and selected to look at, I guess, the number I hear, and I believe it's in the past staff reports, is 15 other models and they were all external to the city. So that's my understanding is that the city went through 15 models from cities in California and selected a 501(c)(6) model. So it's not my understanding that their in-house, we'll just say, or internal city models were selected. So at that point, the Management Partners recommendation, I don't believe had been really discussed at all. It just was kind of sitting there. But then the decision, the city was made in 2011 and 12 to create an independent 501(c)(6) nonprofit to manage our tourism. And that's how we got the bureau. And that's also how we found that the city was very interested overall in a full-time tourism expert. So if it hadn't been for that process, we never would have probably gotten to this idea of having a full-time tourism expert working exclusively for the City of Morro Bay. So that's sort of how I've been learning about the process and watching it. And then the question I think council had last, the goal that we set that the staff has done nothing more than implement basically was please, you know, evaluate the structure and find out if there's an alternate. So my core question is, do we have, given, given the different, the two different, well, given the recommendation, given what we've had, given what we've had prior to that where you had an agency doing a lot of, a lot of the marketing, you didn't have an individual, you also didn't have an economic development staff person. The city's taken a hard look at the way we're going to be sustaining ourselves for the next future 50 years at least and realized that we can, we can no longer sort of, you know, throw darts at a dartboard and expect that revenues will come. We've had a lot of changes. We're going to have the power plants closed down in that time and we have to not only diversify, but also gather and circle our wagons around the sources of income that we do have, including then tourism. So at this point, my question was fundamental structure that supports coordination of the destination of Morro Bay. So the current structure as it is with the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau under the umbrella of the Tourism BID Board with a dotted line to city, that's where we are. And is that the fundamental structure that supports coordination moving forward of destination Morro Bay? While I think that is a good and successful system, it has been proven and you, there's no denying that when you add a BID, you add revenue. And when you add a focused individual with expert experience, you add revenue. So that is impossible to disprove and I haven't heard staff trying to disprove that. While I think that is a good and successful system, it's difficult for me to say that I don't believe it's a holistic system for what the City of Morro Bay needs today. And I don't think it's the structure that will work for us as we go into creating our economic, economic development strategic plan that's looking three to five years out. So I feel as though we do need to work closer together and I do want us to work closer together. And I don't know of a structure that can accomplish that other than the alternative we see from staff. I can't see how having a staff person simply sitting at the table as exists now is, is getting us to where we need to go for the next 50 years. That's, that's how I'm viewing it. So I feel we've given a lot of responsibility for a volunteer board. I feel like our 501(c)(6) board is very, very, very busy. I find that when I've attended their meetings for those two years and then just simply watching the other day and this year as well, when I watch in replay, they're often talking about the amount of meetings and how long their meetings are. And it's, we're asking them to do a function that is a bit beyond what I would expect that it would have been. I mean, it's doing sometimes over supervision of a bureau and I think that's very difficult. So that's just, that's just been, you know, my observation is that I think sometimes we're burning out a board. Not that they're not capable and not that they're not experts in hospitality, but I just think it's a lot. And, you know, you've seen that we've had coming and goings on the board and we did spend, I know I specifically called out to a lot of hoteliers to recruit them and to ask them to please join the board just this go-around. And I'm happy to see that we, we do have our hotelier full board. We're missing an at-large position now, but we do have finally our full board of hoteliers, which we hadn't had for a while. So all I can say is it's just, it's, it's difficult to ask people to commit to their business and then also commit to running a second business, which I see as the Tourism Bureau. I think that doing, reducing a level of bureaucracy would be good for us to create one board that is involved in all of the destination marketing aspects. I would support investigating perhaps in a goal, if not this year, then certainly next year, to transition to the 94 law. I don't see how that would happen if the city didn't have more of a stake in running the overall marketing. I can't see how the bureau would necessarily be able to do the, the marketing for the city and then also do a large administrative process, which is like try and, and go out and change and transition to the 94 law. I see that that's a benefit of coming inside is that the city would be then naturally inclined to move that process forward. I think that this seems to be the most streamlined structure to coordinate the brand of Morro Bay. I feel that it will be the most responsible structure to answer to the community at large. I'm not a marketing professional and that's clearly been stated probably many times, but I am responsible to the community at large to ensure that the marketing dollars that are coming in from our visitors and passed through our system is looked at holistically and is, the decisions are made to the best of our abilities. That's not to say that I don't believe that's what's been happening. I think that there is a structure that will improve the way we are performing overall and I think it will improve the ability of us to be a unified destination in the City of Morro Bay. So I know it sounds like we don't appreciate, or at least for me or staff, that we don't appreciate the effort and the work. And that's not the case. You may interpret it that way. And I certainly, that's not my intention and I hope that folks won't interpret it that way. I want us to work closer together and I think there is a structure that is nearly there. If you look at the alternative proposals, I saw really three areas where I thought there was disagreement. But really, the major area where there is disagreement is whether or not a staff person works internally as a partner with the city or maintains the structure of the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau. That seems to me to be the sticking point. Everything else, you know, you can negotiate 300, 500, it's, you know, it's a, it sounds like a lot of money, but you know, when you're looking at a million dollars, you know, it's not as, it's, the $200,000 is negligible. But I definitely think that our one sticking point is how we work together. And I do believe that we're taking a big risk in asking staff to internal, bring this internally in because it's been very successful and I think it will be an absolute push to maintain the success of it. And it was necessary, we have to. If we bring it in, we have to make it work and it has to be better than it is. You know, status quo won't get us there. So I do think it is a risk for all of us to do it, but I do think it's the right decision overall, considering that this is a very important source of income to all of the citizens of Morro Bay. And, you know, most citizens in Morro Bay don't own a tourism business. You know, they likely don't own a business in Morro Bay at all, the majority. So looking at it in that way, I think that having the city be a partner directly with the tourism marketing experts and the stakeholders works well in the structure that the staff has laid out. I just think it will be the consistent structure that we can institutionalize and is unlikely to change. And I know it's an unpopular view. It's difficult for me to hear that the advisory board is, you know, unanimously against a decision that I'm making. It's hard to hear that, you know, you know, there's a little dispute perhaps, but certainly mayor, certainly there are hoteliers that think it's, would be the wrong opinion. So even if it's not the opinion tonight that the council agrees with, knowing that I've expressed my opinion that I do support the alternative to come into the city, you know, it's a struggle for me to say that because it's, I'm concerned it will be misinterpreted as not respecting the work that's been done. So I can't do anything about that if that is the interpretation, but I will say once again that that's not where I'm coming from. I'm not looking at it from an emotional point of view. And if I were, it would be far easier just to keep it the way it is because I have great respect for all the board members, current and previous. And it would be much easier to say, you know what? Let's just let it go. But I don't believe in my role as a council member that it's the right structure for us moving forward. I think we have a unique opportunity here. Things are lining up. We've all said we've wanted to work closer together with all of the entities in the city and I think we've got an opportunity to create an economic development strategic plan that works for all of us. I don't think we're going to get this opportunity again. So I think it's now or never to bring a closer relationship into the city. That's all that I would say at this point to start the conversation up here. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. Matt?
Okay. I don't know, we're quite to pick up there.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. That's a, that's a hard one.
No, I don't think in terms, if we want to use the football metaphor, I don't think I'm going to need that many downs to explain what I want to say. I do believe we have a couple different propositions out and I do believe that what's been said in the commentary and from the T-Bid folks and staff, I do believe, as Dave you were saying, I think with the proposal from the city and with what's been presented from T-Bid, I do believe that we can work this out and come up with a solution. I do agree with what you're saying, Christine. I think in terms of the city manager being the person atop that process and overseeing it is the way to go, but however, there's all those other bargaining points that I would be willing to put into your hands, Dave. That's all.
Thanks, Matt. John?
I thank you for your input, all of you that are left out there and all of you that earlier made comments. It's really helpful to hear directly from you in this open session. I too have spent a significant amount of time speaking and thinking and talking with a number of representatives, hoteliers, business people, obviously, city leaders. And I've done a fair amount of research to look at models throughout the country that work well for various cities. I'm not saying that our city is the same as any other city, but indeed, to get comparative analysis, that's part of the due diligence that I commonly do when I look at these kinds of things. I'm not going to repeat what Christine said because it's 12:05, but I happen to agree with the majority of everything that she said and that's no disrespect to any single I think the issue is it's a new day. It's a new day. And, and what may have been successful in the past and what may have worked in the past for the city as a whole was something that was very successful, led by a group of people that were very capable and I feel did a, an exemplary job, as can be seen by a fair amount of the results in the numbers that we see. I'm going to say it again, we're, we're a city that is facing huge financial issues. In the future, the same 10,000 people that have been here for the last 12 years, not exactly the same people, but you know, we haven't grown, are going to be responsible for payment of an infrastructure in the city that will continue to require more and more dollars in order for us to continue to exist. We cannot even fund a capital budget. We do not have the ability to update and upgrade routine equipment. A majority of what we spend from a capital standpoint is emergent, failure items that demand dollars in order to just keep the city operational or functional. Economic diversification is mandatory, but it's going to take years for that to happen. It is not going to happen overnight. And Christine said that and I agree with that. TOT is our largest dollar contributor to the general fund, to the city, and we must do the best possible, from a fiduciary responsibility, we must do our best. And we must, I believe, be strategic as opposed to merely operational and emotional in the way that we manage our TOT dollars. And I think it's more than marketing and promotion. I do believe we're talking about branding the city. marketing and promotion. I do believe we're talking about branding the city. I asked Chuck to come up. He didn't know that I was going to ask him to come up, by the way, but I wanted to pick his brain on, on, on why he did what he did, or why the county did what it did, and what the rationale was for it. Susan Stewart made an excellent comment. If you have nine entities in the community, in a small community like this, trying to market the city nine different ways, we will fail in a grand fashion. I, I believe that we must merge economic development with promotion, marketing, to do what I would call brand management, or brand development. And I believe that that, that would best happen under the control and leadership of the city. I believe we have new added brain trust that are intelligent, capable people, that I have seen do amazing things. I also believe that we have resources in our existing tourism management board and our, our tourism management, whatever we call it, TM, I'm forgetting now. But, but, but when we combine those two entities together, I believe that we can become even better at doing what we need to do, and that is, instead of being disparate and fractionated in our efforts, under one roof, strategically plan, operate, manage, and measure the results for the city's branding efforts. And I believe that needs to be married closely with this, with what is happening at the county level with the TMD, and I believe they provide a good model for exactly how we should approach that. So, not to continue on and repeat what Christine said, you know, I really think that, that this offends some people. I, I noticed the reaction when, you know, my opinion was aired, and it looked like the determination was made as to which way I was going, and I guess I'm saddened by that, but in my heart of hearts, I'm really doing what I think is best for the city, and that's what you elected me to do, and I will continue to do that no matter what. And it has nothing to do with, with people, relationships, or emotion. It has to do with rational thinking, strategy, and, and what I think is best, in my opinion, for this city. So, therefore, with that all said, at this late hour, being hypoglycemic, a bit dehydrated, and very cold, I do support the city's recommendation and would highly suggest that we place the management as a sole entity under the structure as recommended by the city, whom I believe is very collaborative, and that we partner, hopefully, with individuals that we have that are available, that have a great skillset, people like Brent, whom I've worked with very closely. I respect you highly. I believe your skills are necessary to this city, and I would hope that you would come aboard and not let these kinds of decisions get in the way. So, therefore, in a long-winded fashion, I'll conclude by saying I do support the initiative. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to pick up where, where John just left off, because I do agree with previous speakers, and, and the things that you've said about the work to date and all the effort, I think are really important, and something that I want to focus on, that you have mentioned, is, is the risk of, of adjusting what is an essential and extremely important revenue source for the community. And the question has been asked, why would you, why would you mess with this? And as I've looked at it, looking back on my experience, I've sat through a number of transitions that adjusted a very important revenue stream for us, and came with great discomfort and displeasure from some in the community, and, and rightfully so, because when you touch the livelihoods and the revenue of the city itself, and the livelihoods of our, of our business community, that's a serious discussion. So, when I first was seated, we were existing with the Community Promotions Committee, and they, they were doing good work on a, on a shoestring budget and making things happen in a different era at that point. I think, you know, we were, we were understanding the importance of tourism, but our, our whole county was really just on the verge of starting to grow into where we've, where we've come now. And that was, that was a very emotional conversation that we had when the whole Tourism Bureau was proposed at that point. Really ripped at the foundational relationships within the business community and pulled in different directions, but at that point, I felt like it was important. It was, it was a calculated risk, and I think it's been shown that that was worth the effort, and that's one of the things that I noticed again with the Tourism Marketing District at the county level. There was questions about why do we need to add or jump in with this, with this larger pool? We've got a great thing going here locally. And again, I thought that was worth the effort and extending our collaboration and was much more strategic. And, and that's the way exactly that I see us approaching this. This is starting to, as, as I think has been mentioned, is we're starting to work and align all these different efforts that currently are not working together. And, and to me, that's the biggest missed opportunity that I'm hopeful we're going to be able to, over the next year and two, start to improve upon and actually demonstrate even better results for, for our businesses, for our city's revenues, and for, for the residents as well. When I list all the different things that we can start to integrate together, I'm, I keep on surprising myself because I find more items that actually could be added to that list, to be in the same room discussing how we can actually plan and implement these, these different projects and, and budgets, and make sure that the effectiveness is worthwhile. I see a continued commitment to hired full-time marketing director and destination management. I see continued strong support and involvement of the Tourism Advisory Board. So those two, to me, sound like, and I think are, besides respecting the, the law of where these assessment dollars can be used, the three most important details of what we'll be doing with this, besides addressing the strategic components that I think are going to lead to even better return. So, I, I think I'll just, I'll end it there. I, I do think that there is, Ms. Stewart's comments about the new business improvement districts, I, I share those concerns. I will note that in, in the Tourism Business Improvement District, that came from the industry, and, and the city definitely participated and assisted, but did not lead. And I don't think it would have succeeded if the city had taken the lead and approached the lodging industry to go that route. I would say the same thing about retail and restaurant and so forth. So, I think we should be on standby. We should be willing to help facilitate and evaluate different options, but it really is going to take leadership from inside the business community and the different sectors to be able to implement a, a successful business district and expansion. I think it's worth looking at, but I, I don't think we'd be successful if we tried to lead it from the city's perspective.
Thanks, Noah. Great discussion and great work by the T-Board, the T-Bid Board, and with Sam's help in the December 10th meeting, there was a lot of work that went on with that. And I just wanted to compliment Sam and the T-Bid Board for their work at that meeting. And I say that because it's not to discount the work that took place on this. I appreciate all my colleagues' comments, and I'll echo all of those. I, I'll back up a little bit. When I was talking about conversations with some of the hoteliers, and I, hopefully that wasn't met in a derogatory way, what struck me is, with the existing structure the way it is, the city may be too far, there may be a larger distance from those hoteliers. When I was, brief conversations, I, I just felt as though there was a little bit more information, there was a little bit more knowledge, there was maybe questions that could have been answered, and, and I think with the city's role in, in this proposed, the new proposed role, I think that'll be, be a stronger link to our hoteliers to be better connected to, and rightfully so. I mean, even have, you know, either, I don't think it would be any less vocal, a voice on what's going on with those dollars for marketing, but maybe build, you know, a stronger relationship to understand what the city is doing, because I think the city's doing a lot. And, you know, great conversation today on sidewalks of all, of all things, which we didn't get to on our goals, but I was certainly prepared to raise the issue. And when, you know, when we talk about the, the goals and objectives that we went through just tonight, there's so many things that the city's doing to support the product in which we want people to come to. There's the marketing part of that, but we have to have a good product. And I think the council does talk about that frequently, and, and it's, and I think we do take it seriously. But, you know, I, I agree with all the, the comments, and I, I do, if I, if, if I don't send out the recognition to the T-Bid Board, the Bureau's work in, in the marketing and the results that has taken place, I would, that would be a failure on my part, because it's been really successful. I, I sat in on many of the early discussions as a vacation rental owner when the T-Bid was just forming, and there was a question whether or not vacation rentals would be included with the hoteliers. Obviously, that didn't, that didn't work out that way. It was just, you know, just a matter of, could we get all the, the vacation rentals on board, because there were so many at the time. So strategically, it was probably a better move to just go with hoteliers. But in the future, that, that conversation could take place. The different, the 94 model is an option as well. I think there's more opportunity than we know, and, and it really is about moving the city forward all, all the way. I, I don't think this is, in my view, I don't, I don't think this is anything but moving the city forward, and, and that is what Councilmember Heding said as well. It's for the overall good of the city, even though it's such a concentrated segment. It is for the overall portion of the city. So, I'm in support of this as well, and unless there's any other remarks, I'm, I'm ready for a motion. I'll, I'll, then, we have the, the motion on the slide. If we had the...
The motion would be to adopt Resolution 316, Alternative A.
I move that we adopt Resolution 315, Alternative A.
And I'd second that. So we have a motion by Councilmember Heding, second by Mayor Irons.
I'm not sure if I had heard 15 or 16. Hopefully, that was 16.
316A.
Thanks.
So, discussion? Just a clarification here?
Yeah, I, I just would like to hone in here on Number 9 about formation of additional business improvement districts. I'm not sure, I think it's Number 9 here on the resolution. Let's just all take a moment and look at that, make sure that that is clear enough that the city is willing to engage with that conversation. I'm, I'm a little concerned that it might be read as we're going to take the lead. We shall work on this. We, we will be pushing this.
So I'm, I'm looking at Alternative A. Is that correct? So Alternative A, Number 9, doesn't have any of that language in it?
I have Alternative A, Number 9, yes. Page 3.
Page...
Page 3.
Resolution 03-15, Alternative A?
It should be 316.
316, okay. Excuse me.
This is a typo.
Pardon me.
So if, if it would help, I'll, I'll tell you how I currently interpret that, and you can help me interpret it even more in our goals and objectives, how we craft our goals and objectives, because we discussed, this is one of the proposed objectives for this year. When, when I read "shall work in this circumstance with local business community", that means if there is a group in the local business community that wants to work with the city, you're telling me work together with them. I do not interpret this as I will go out and drum up support.
Okay.
And, and I recommend that we clarify that in our goals and objectives, as we discussed earlier, earlier this evening.
So, can we...
My interpretation of that, what I don't read is the city is committing itself to go lead the charge for the formation of additional bids.
Okay. That's, that's what I was looking for. I just wanted to confirm.
So I guess maybe to modify that, maybe instead of the city shall work, how about the city shall support any efforts? And that would maybe clarify any misinterpretations? Can we...
That, that's great, and that's sort of the language that we're looking at for the, for the goal, actually.
Okay.
So, I'll amend my motion to include the amended language.
Shall support any efforts within the local business community.
Correct.
So, forgive me, but I, I, I need to see your resolution. Yeah, because I've, I've got 315, Alternative A. I could just...
I think it is. I think there was a typo.
Okay, so that's, that's what I had as well. Pardon me, just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it was just a typo, right?
So, shall work?
This is just, this is right, it's right at the end of the staff report. Yeah.
Mine says bid.
That's the second one. That's the Alternative B.
Oh, that's the general.
Yeah, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the...
I think we don't need to get bogged down.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, so, so just restate it one more time, since we've been kind of going back and forth, and then, and then we can just make sure we've got it dialed in. So, your original motion, please?
Is to approve Resolution 316A with the inclusion of... Inclusion of the amended language, which specifically states...
The city shall support any efforts within the local business community, et cetera, et cetera.
The city shall support any efforts within the local business community, et cetera, et cetera.
That's my motion.
Okay, clarification. We're saying 316. My staff report says 315.
And so did mine, but...
Yeah, so, can you... It's a typo. Okay, so, okay.
Dave?
Okay, so, all right, I got it.
Just a one last little item there. That last sentence, stakeholder approval as required by law shall be sought by January 1st, 2018. Is that necessary?
Hotelier community asked for a...
The hotelier community asked for a timeline. It's up to the council if you feel that timeline is necessary.
I think this is going to be driven by the community, so why have an arbitrary deadline?
Sure, that makes sense. And the way you've modified it, it makes sense to probably remove the timeline.
And excluding...
The last sentence.
The last sentence stating, thanks, the...
Sorry.
Stating stakeholder approval as required by law shall be sought by January 1st, 2018.
Clear?
Yeah. We need a second.
You need to resecond, I think, Mayor, and then I have an item for discussion.
Okay, I'll resecond, I'll second my, the motion one more time.
Okay, and then I'm looking for where we discuss that the city manager, in the resolution, where does it talk about the city manager making a decision about contractor or FTE employee? Or, I'm not sure it says that in the resolution. I know it said it in the staff report. Number two, yes. Oh, there it is. Unless on further study, the city manager recommends...
Yeah.
Okay, great. And I'm just going to add my two cents. Actually, at this point, I was just going to clarify again that there was some confusion when I spoke to certain folks, that we were, the city's intention was to go back to an agency-style facilitation. And I'm really clear that I believe in the tourism marketing professional exactly as we have it today, just coming under the wing of the city. So I just want to, we're all clear on that, but, okay, yeah. Thanks for allowing me to do that.
Good to go.
I do have a discussion point.
Okay.
Looking at it, and I know in terms of the T-Bid rebuttal to what Sam had, we have the $300,000 under number five, and they had broached the subject of a higher amount. Should we put more than $300,000 from the TOT? Or, I mean, should we, is that something that we can bargain further down, or do we need to put it in writing now?
I'm supportive of it just the way it is.
Then I would be out of it?
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. All right, great, we've got, it's 12:34. We do have some important items we need to get through.
You need to do number six.
Number six is essential.
Number six, and the contract, and discretionary boards, all three of them.
And then one is GPA.
Okay, the GPA? Okay, so let's do the GPA first, and then we'll do discretionary. So let's move to, yeah, so item C4 is a word of consultant contract for the updated general plan, local coastal plan zoning code, environment impact report for Michael Baker International.
Am I waiting until Heading gets back?
Ready to start?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Scott.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're ready to go. Award of consultant contract for the update of the general plan and the local coastal plan.
Yeah, so this is contract authorization, tender into a contract with Michael Baker International for the update of the general plan and LCP update. A little bit of background, back in, on March 24th, 2015, we completed the Plan for the Plan effort, so that was the work plan for the general plan update. That was prepared by PMC. In April and July of last year, we worked through the grant agreements for the Ocean Protection Council and Coastal Commission. And in October of 2015, we released the RFP for the general plan update. The response period ended on November 24th, and we received a single response, and again, that was from Michael Baker International. I mentioned PMC a minute ago. Michael Baker International, early last year, acquired PMC. So we actually have one of the representatives in the audience, Tammy Seal back there, you might recognize her from the Plans for the Plan update. She was, again, formerly with PMC. They're a multidisciplinary firm that has done numerous general plan updates. They've assembled a local team to work on the updates, so they're the lead, and then they've hired, then they have their subconsultants, which would be Rincon consultants, Rincon consultants for the EIR portion of it, ecological assessment management for the biological components, Central Coast Transportation, a local Morro Bay business, RRM design for the zoning code update, and then off at nickel to look at sea level rise and other ocean and infrastructure-related items. Current budget that we have includes about $800,000 for the update, including $400,000 in grant funding. I guess I did catch up. The total cost of the proposal is $806,138. There's some optional, there's some options in the proposal, one of which is to do a comprehensive update of the zoning code. Now, that comes with a cost of $80,000 to $140,000, as opposed to doing a sort of consistency update to the zoning code. This would be a comprehensive overhaul of it, and then bringing it up to kind of current zoning code standards, freshening it up. And then there was an option to utilize the city voice, continue to utilize the city voice phone survey for $5,000. We did take this before the general, we had Michael Baker International interview with the General Plan Advisory Committee. That did take place on December 16th. We had eight of our nine GPA members present, so that was a pretty good turnout. And Michael Baker International brought representatives from each of the subconsultants as well. That discussion and interview process lasted about two hours, and resulting in a recommendation to city council to enter into a contract with Michael Baker. That vote was unanimous on that recommendation. They also voted to include the comprehensive, you know, option for the comprehensive zoning code update, and recommended also the additional allocation, so we have $800,000 in the budget. They also recommended that you add this $6,138 to bring it up to the current contract cost, and that you do consider additional funding for the $5,000 for the continued use of city voice as one of the outreach options for the general plan update, because we did prove successful in the test that we conducted on that. These additional funding items would be something we would bring forward during the mid-year budget review, so we would identify funding sources for those additional items, if so desired by the council. With that, that's the recommendation. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from council? To the left, to the right, none, thank you. I'll open up for public comment. For anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back. And I just want to thank you, Scott, for bringing this forward, and our Michael Baker and associate consultant for staying with us so long. I apologize for you staying as long as you have, and with those comments. I'll turn for other council comments on this. I think it's, for me, it was encouraging, and I appreciated the more robust, comprehensive code update. It's just necessary. We're investing a lot in the general plan, so it only makes sense to really do everything in the way that was proposed. So I appreciate the proposal, the GPA support on that, and just bring it forward the way we are. So those are my comments. Matt? Christine?
Just really exciting to look at page 147 of the staff report and see, you know, there's the plan right there, when we start it. So we're actually going to start to update it, so now we just have to finish that project, because I think we started it before.
Yeah.
But I appreciate, also, it's exciting to have a new citizens advisory group out there, and appreciate their valuing the...
Thanks, Red.
The total zoning, complete zone update as well. So I fully support where we're headed, and it's pretty exciting, even at this time of night, I'm motivated by it.
John, Noah?
No comments.
Noah?
No comments. I just, I agree with moving forward on this, and much appreciation to the advisory committee for helping us work through this and their attention to the details.
Okay, I'd move staff recommendation.
Sorry.
Motion by Mayor, and second by Councilmember Smuckler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. And now we'll move back to item C3. And item C3 is appointment of Mayor Protem, and appointment of representatives on discretionary boards, council liaison assignments, and council subcommittees. And I'd like to thank Dana for putting this all together. I know it has my name on it, but this is a staff report that was put together, and it has all our council liaison assignments, and I appreciate the feedback from council, and there's no change in discretionary assignments. It's just a matter of approving the recommendation for Mayor Protem and the assignment of that position. So I need a motion for that. Go.
Okay, then I move that we accept the appointment of Mayor Protem, and appointment of representatives on discretionary boards, council liaison assignments, and council subcommittees.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember McHaweski, and second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Great, thanks.
I'm there by the mic.
And then, so now we'll move on to item C5, introduction, first reading, amending ordinance number 598, section 3.08.070 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code. And... Where are we at? Mr. Buckingham?
Sorry, we brought up the presentation for C6, Paul.
Okay.
You could delay 3-5 till next meeting. It is not pressing.
C5 is not?
No.
Okay, all right. So then we'll go straight to, so we'll go straight to C6?
We don't want to be changing the code after midnight.
Yeah, okay. All right. But we'll read this one.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that was a first reading, too, so.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the last item of the night. This is a discussion direction and first reading of a potential marijuana ordinance and clarification of the zoning code. Next slide, please. So briefly, I'm going to just start off with a couple of slides here, and then turn it over to Chief Christie. So why are we doing this now? And I don't mean at 12:45 at night, I mean in January of 2016. So we believe that the various issues associated with marijuana deserve a robust and sustained public conversation in Morro Bay. However, the state passed several marijuana laws late last session that had a mistaken or arbitrary one-march deadline in those laws. So in order to retain any local control, the city must take action by the end of this month. Take action means must have a second reading on an ordinance if we want to retain any local control.
On...
Yeah, on commercial cultivation. Were it not for this looming deadline, we would not be acting so quickly. Next slide, please. So this recent law, the deadline is, references commercial cultivation. Other aspects of these recently passed laws do not require any action until 2017 or later. It's likely, we're making an assumption, that a statewide, quote, recreational use initiative will likely be on the November 2016 ballot. So instead of considering all of the various aspects of marijuana in bits and pieces over this month, and that month, and this year, and that year, we recommend having sustained community conversation in 2017. Staff has included, as you saw, the following draft objective in our fiscal year 2016-17 objectives. That objective reads marijuana ordinances begin a robust public discussion informed by the results of a likely marijuana recreational use initiative on the November 16 ballot that results in council consideration and action on all aspects of marijuana cultivation, medical use, and possible recreational use. So I point those things out to make it clear that we don't want to be hasty in this, and the only reason we are taking this action, we are recommending you take this action now, is because we have this sort of arbitrary deadline created by the state, and that we are committed to having an open, robust community conversation on all aspects of marijuana use cultivation, and we recommend we do that after the results of the 2016 election. So we're having one conversation, and not having one now, and then one in October, and then one, or two or three next year. Next slide, please. So here is a summary of the staff recommendation. The staff recommends that the council act now to retain local control. If the city does not act to ban commercial cultivation now, then the city would, in perpetuity, fall under state regulation and control. The city can always loosen up later, but if we don't, if we do not retain local control now, we will not be able to regain it later. So essentially, the proposal is act now to retain local control, then have a conversation about what sort of local controls we want to get, very loose, very tight, we can have that conversation. The only issue, therefore, that we must address now is commercial cultivation. The staff recommendation does these things. First, what it does not do, it does not ban cultivation for personal use by card-carrying medical marijuana patients or licensed caregivers. It, that privilege remains under existing state law. We do not ban that. And existing state law would define how the, does define how that activity must be carried out in Morro Bay. So we rely on the state law for number of plants and all of those various things for card-carrying medical marijuana patients or licensed caregivers. Otherwise, this bans commercial cultivation within the city of Morro Bay, and it reaffirms our permissive, our existing permissive zoning ordinance, which does not allow commercial cultivation. So with that overview, I'll turn it over to Chief Amy and Scott.
Good morning, council. I'm going to jump ahead, and I want to thank the city attorney's office for their extremely amazing analysis of the law, and your staff report you saw was quite detailed. My PowerPoint won't be nearly as detailed. And then I'm hoping that at any point, Joe or Scott can jump in on areas of their expertise. And thank you to Dave. I thought that was a great overview, and essentially, what I'm going to say, but I'm going to put a little more explanation, which you saw in your staff report, but for this presentation, should anybody watch it at a different time, or if they're watching now. So C6 is for the first reading of ordinance 599, which is to prohibit commercial marijuana cultivation in Morro Bay, and adoption of Resolution Number 0416 to reaffirm and confirm the city's zoning code. Ordnance 599 relating to medicinal marijuana uses and prohibitions in the city of Morro Bay, and staff does recommend, introduce the ordinance and waive further reading and amending Title IX, Chapter 9.06 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to rename the chapter, prohibit commercial marijuana cultivation in all zones, and make other adjustments to the city's existing medical marijuana dispensary regulations. And Resolution Number 04... And resolution number 04-16 is reaffirming that medicinal marijuana dispensaries and the cultivation of marijuana as used is not specifically enumerated in the municipal code are prohibited. Staff recommends to adopt that resolution, 04-16 reaffirming and confirming the city's zoning code enumerated under Title 17 of the municipal code as a permissive zoning code such that commercial marijuana cultivation as a use not specifically enumerated in the zoning code is prohibited. And if you have any questions, I'm sure Scott would love to answer those moving forward. And then a recap, which some of you I know know this pretty well, about the Compassionate Use Act, otherwise known as Prop 215. In 1996, the California voters passed Prop 215 and it provided a limited defense from prosecution for cultivation and possession. In 2004, Senate Bill 420, otherwise known as the Medical Marijuana Program, allowed cities to adopt and enforce rules and enhance access to qualified patients and primary caregivers to medical marijuana. And then I wanted to define a couple of health and safety codes because Dave talked about that briefly, how there are state laws that provide access to medicinal marijuana to qualified patients by primary caregivers. And Health and Safety Code 11365, oh, why don't you do that for me? I got ahead of it a little bit. It was moving right along on my iPad. Thanks, Joe. I had no idea what you were looking at me for. Health and Safety Code 11362.5, otherwise known as the Compassionate Use Act of 1996. And then basically, it is, like I said, to ensure that all Californians have the right to obtain and use medical marijuana for medical purposes as deemed appropriate by their doctor. And there's some of the illnesses you can see there and some of those words I'm not going to say, so you can read those on the slide. And those have to do with some of the qualified illnesses and there's many more that you can get a doctor's recommendation for medical marijuana. HNS 11362.5 continued, also provide different exceptions to different other codes within health and safety as they relate to the cultivation of marijuana as well as possession of marijuana for qualified patients and primary caregivers. So that's the law in California under the Health and Safety Code. Next slide. Medical marijuana program is also captured in the Health and Safety Code and that also talks again about how much a qualified patient or a primary caregiver can possess or cultivate, and that's defined by code. And we're not asking you to change that, it's in the California code right now. And now we'll talk a little bit about what happened just last year, the end of last year when Governor Brown signed the three new laws which make the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. This act created a comprehensive state licensing system for commercial cultivation, manufacture, retail sale, transportation, distribution, delivery, and testing of medical cannabis. This new act will have a statewide regulatory scheme and it's going to be similar to what we currently have with the alcohol beverage and control where they'll oversee the cultivation of marijuana from the state level. This act also developed a dual licensing system, which we'll talk about here, where the state will be able to license, but somebody will have to go to a local entity prior to going to the state to seek a license. The dual licensing system, as I spoke to already, before any kind of medical marijuana license can be issued by the state, the applicant must have obtained the necessary local license and/or permit. Within approximately two years, all cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana will require one of 17 state licenses and each license will have to be renewed annually under the new system. And again, it's a dual licensing system, I keep coming back to that, and that's why it's so important that we're talking about local control and what we do as far as our recommendation to you tonight. And pursuant to the act, local jurisdictions that adopt the ban on medical marijuana dispensaries and/or commercial cultivation will effectively have a veto over whether the state license for the locally regulated activities can be issued. It's time-sensitive cultivation regulation. As the city manager already spoke about, we have been placed in a position where we need to adopt an ordinance if we want to maintain local control by March 1st, 2016. And I want to touch a little bit on our current municipal code. We do have a prohibition on brick and mortar and that can be found in Chapter 9.06 and it's express prohibition of fixed-location dispensaries in Morro Bay. And then our city's zoning code arguably constitutes permissive zoning code because our code lists all permitted land uses. If a particular use is not listed, then it's generally prohibited. Our recommendation, in order to clarify the existing dispensary regulations and maintain local control over the issue of commercial marijuana cultivation before the state mandated deadline, it has recommended the City Council take the following actions. Revise the ordinance's definition of dispensary to clarify that distribution by all persons, not just primary caregivers, is prohibited. The current ordinance defines dispensary as any facility in a single fixed location where a primary caregiver makes available sales, transmits, gives, or otherwise provides medical marijuana for medical purposes to two or more qualified patients. Amended ordinance includes references to the current state law and clarify the ban on distribution applies to anyone, not just primary caregivers. We also recommend to maintain local control, that we adopt the resolution confirming an implied ban on commercial marijuana cultivation in all zones. If the city seeks to maintain local control over commercial cultivation, then a local commercial cultivation ban is required. If the city does not have local rules in place by March 1st, the state preamps local control. And again, it's a twofold approach. Introduce for first reading ordinance number 599 prohibiting the commercial cultivation of marijuana and medical marijuana citywide and adopt resolution number 04-16 affirming the city's zoning code as a permissive zoning code such that commercial marijuana cultivation is impliedly prohibited. Let's see, the city will have until January 2018 to enact a ban or other laws regarding the governing of medical marijuana dispensaries. And I think this is something that Dave already brought up as far as not wanting to cut and paste the different regulations to kind of see where we're going in the next election. And in conclusion, which is a good thing, recently adopt state law requires the city to act on commercial marijuana cultivation or be subject to preemptive state regulation. Therefore, staff and the city attorney recommend that the City Council adopt both and express an implied prohibition on commercial marijuana cultivation in order to maintain maximum local regulatory authority. And I know I read that quickly and I'm sorry, I read through it almost verbatim, but if you have any questions at this time, there's myself, city attorney, and of course, the city manager and our community development manager who would love to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? None? None? Seeing none? I'll open it for public comment. Notably, there's nobody here. I did make an effort at the beginning of the council meeting to discuss, hey, this is probably going to be a late item, is there anybody who want to make public comment? So I just want to make that a note for the record. And seeing that, I'll close public comment, officially bring it back. Discussion? Noah?
Yes, thank you. I just want to start off by mentioning that I was able to attend with the city manager and the chief of police, the League of California Cities briefing on this. And everything that I heard there, I think, is reflected in here. And it's pretty clear that different communities in our county are taking different tracks on this and I appreciate that ours is intending to respect the Compassionate Use Act and access for qualified patients and primary caregivers. I did just want to look specifically on page nine of 10 of the ordinance. Reading the item B, marijuana cultivation, I'd like to recommend that we, and I talked a little bit with this, with the city attorney on this before the meeting, I'd like to actually strengthen that, that one just enough to, in my opinion, it was, it wasn't quite clear or as strong as I think it should be about our commitment for respecting the Compassionate Use Act. So the suggested adjustments, and we can let the city attorney comment on this, would be that we remove, if you're there, we remove with, in the first sentence
Noah, can you read the title? I know you said
Yeah.
Page nine, but the title and section where you're at?
Yeah. Page nine of 10, section 9.06.040, under prohibition.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah. Page nine of 10 of the ordinance.
Subsection B, as in boy.
And that's, that's under cultivation?
Yes, under prohibition. Marijuana, item B, marijuana cultivation. So a couple more pages. I got one more. Okay. So I'd suggest that we remove the word potential so that it reads with the exception of personal individual cultivation for
By
By qualified patients and primary caregivers.
Or.
Or primary caregivers.
Everybody just read it?
Yeah. Actually, Joe, if you'd like to read what I was hoping to achieve.
So after the word cultivation, it would say by a primary caregiver or qualified patient for, and then strike personal use, then strike by the cultivator. Get that? And then in the resolution, on page three of the resolution, the same thing needs to be done on section three. We need to strike the word potential.
Is that all we're striking?
After cultivation, we're going to add by primary caregiver or qualified patient and then strike for personal, I mean, don't strike for, strike personal and then strike by the cultivator. So that it's clear that what Councilmember Smucker was concerned about is it seemed like we were saying even the primary caregivers and qualified patients couldn't do what the law allowed. So he just wanted to clarify that. So that's all this does.
And actually, in the second reading, that will be clarified in this document?
Yes.
Good. Okay. That's good.
That's it?
All right. So Noah, you want to make a motion on this?
Absolutely. Let me go ahead and is that written out here? Okay. Let me get up. I will move that we adopt both, let me get up to the top here.
Go to the first page of the staff report.
First page. Introduce the ordinance number 599.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting to. Okay. I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 599 and waive further reading, amending Title 9, Chapter 9.06 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code with the adjustments as noted by the city attorney. And that we adopt resolution 04-16 reaffirming and confirming the city's zoning code enumerated under Title 17 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code, that it is a permissive zoning code such that medicinal medical marijuana cultivation as a use is not specifically enumerated in the code and is prohibited.
Second. So we have a motion by Mr. Smucker, second by Mr. Irons. Any further discussion? Okay.
Just last item, it was mentioned in the staff report, I think it's really important. We are committing in our current goals, I just want to say it again because it's important for people to hear, to work on a more comprehensive plan going forward and this is more of our stopgap effort.
Yep. Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Moving on to future agenda items. Any? Christine?
Yes, I have one and I'll look to the city attorney to help me word it, but something about a staff report to Council, I guess, timing wise, you'll have to let us know, but regarding the policy on campaign statements during public comment at City Council meetings, essentially having a discussion about that, your, I guess, opinion and advice, I don't even know how to say it.
Running for office.
Yeah, what were, I guess, political speech at, in public comment, I suppose. Is that, would that be correct?
Yes. Just, I just feel the need to say, when I first, like, one of my first meetings, someone did that.
Yes. I remember.
And I think it was the second time I saw it happen. I remember commenting, saying, we shouldn't be doing that. And then when I wasn't here and John Fox was here, it happened again and we had prompted each other, so he said what, basically what I just said tonight. So I just want to make sure you remember, I didn't just bring it up tonight.
No, no. I actually have always felt badly about not bringing it up the first time I recognized it because I know it's a change for our community and I, yeah, I kind of knew it was coming, but we haven't discussed it. I think it would be good. Okay? Is that, but I, is that agreed?
Yep. Definitely, I think unanimous. Yep.
Thank you for your support.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? Seeing none? Meeting adjourned? Thanks very much. Thank you.